Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education. Ms. Santiago, do we have a call?
Yes, we do.
So, the only item on our agenda, other than the workshop, but the only business that we're going to be talking about is the approval of the revised educational specifications for the Buckley High School and the Hartford Public High School Education Complex and the authorization of the grant application. So, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you Chairman Flores and good evening. Just going to give us just a very brief overview. This project is focused on renovating Buckley High School to as new condition and being configuring the high school as a comprehensive high school with multiple college and career pathways and it also will contain other specialized facilities, if you will. The design is slated to include our Board of Education Central Office space, the central commissary, the warehouse for our food and nutrition department, in addition to a central field house that will support district-wide sports needs, in addition to space for the regional school choice office and, you know, a space for inventory in terms of technology and of course, the other pathway, as we're now calling it at the moment, for students that need personalized learning as well. And so, we, as you can recall, decided to postpone and give additional opportunity for our board members to engage at a deeper level and for our team to be available to answer any specific questions as to any of the aspects of the project. And so, we're back today and I know that there was also a choice and facilities committee meeting in which, you know, there was a deeper dive into some of the presentation. So, that's just some of the background as to why, you know, what got us to where we are today.
Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Clark?
So, just a quick, I don't know, okay, just a quick question. I know that we're slated for 1,100 students and I'm not sure exactly where we are currently at Buckley and if we are below that, how are we looking to recruit to have additional students within the school?
So, currently, right now, we have 685 students currently at Buckley, attending Buckley.
Is there a course to recruit more students to come? I mean, I know we're doing a district-wide. I'm just concerned with the amount of slated, if we could be utilizing that space for something else, if we're not going to be able to recruit that many children?
So, part of the educational specs or really finalizing what those academic pathways or college career pathways look like is also to attract students to the program, to the While the building is kind of, the specs is kind of for about 1,100 students, as we begin kind of to finalize and really dive into the work, that number might decrease as we look at what space is needed in order for the requirements for the program, but also to make sure that the sustainability of programs for the long-term are included in part of the design work as we kind of flesh this out.
I will also add, Ms. Clark, that when speaking about that personalized pathway, we know that we are targeting at the minimum 100 students specifically, not from just Buckley. So, these students will come from throughout our district that, you know, are going to need that specialized, smaller learning approach.
Yes, Ms. Storley?
Just continuing with the personalized learning, the first phase of DME, we moved global to Buckley. And so, my question is, I understand that the IB curriculum is too expensive to maintain, but are we going to put an emphasis on the AP courses and the advanced placement curriculum? If you can just speak to that.
So, I'm going to ask Principal Marte to talk about that, about the AP program and kind of the increases of participation that we've seen in her school recently.
Good evening. So, one of the things, we started with the global transition last year. So, last year, we had 38 students coming from global. This year, we have 65 students from global for the half a day. And last year, we went from 38 students to 110 students that were taking AP classes last year. And so, we sent everybody to training this year and so that increased. So, now, we are slated to have 200 and, as of this morning, it was 200-plus students that are taking AP classes this year. So, we have the most AP courses in the district and we're looking to continue to grow that and creating sufficient programs for foundational work so that students can not only enter into AP courses, but be able to get three, fours, and fives in the AP courses.
So, can students from other schools attend the AP course? For example, those students from Hartford High?
As of this moment, no. The only student, because they could do, they could have AP courses in their own school. And so, the reason why we have the partnership with global is because global is closing and they're transitioning into Buckley. And so, the ninth, 10th, and 11th graders are slated to be graduating from Buckley High School because, yes, Academy say yes organization is following them into Buckley. So, we started that partnership last year and we're continuing that partnership this year. And so, last year, they were only taking the first class. So, their first period class was at Buckley and then they went to Buckley, I mean, they went to Buckley and then they went to global. This year, they're taking their first two classes at Buckley and then they go to global for the afternoon. And so, next year, they'll have their whole entire day at Buckley. And so, the seniors that are currently in this transition will be graduating technically from global, but the juniors, sophomores, and freshmen are graduating from Buckley.
So, what is the target in terms of student population? How many students are you training, you're planning to attract through your AP program? And so, I ask that in relation to Mrs. Clark's question, when you're talking about space and the amount of students and the amount of enrollment, are we going to have an AP course that's solid and fully staffed and fully full of students? Or are we just going, is this a conversation about Buckley and not expanding? I'm just, I'm trying to understand where we're going.
So, when you look at, so when you look at kind of advanced placement courses, the AP, it's a curriculum provided by the College Board to many, many high schools nationally that allows students to actually take, you know, rigorous courses in which, based on what their passing score is at the, at the, at the end of the course, they can earn any type of college credits towards, towards the college of their choice. Idea, I mean, ideally, we would like to see AP in all our high schools and making sure that students have access to AP courses in, in the various type of subjects that they may have, not just solely at Buckley, but actually, we would like to see it at Weaver and, and, and other high schools throughout the district. The goal is actually expanding those opportunities to making sure that every, every high school in the district, students have access to participate and pursue an AP course and have that choice as a student. Now, that might be, when we talk about personalized learning, that might not be something our students want and they might want something different that might, let's say, and again, I'm just brainstorming, but let's say if it's a coding academy that might be, or an engineering, students might want to take that pathway. However, that curriculum might look different, that might not have or require AP courses, but will probably be a rigorous curriculum that really engages students in the learning process with something that they like, but also, as they graduate, actually be prepared for college and career. So, those, that's, that's kind of, this is the framework that allows for those conversations to happen of creating those pathways of really what students like, because there's going to be a lot of conversations that, that require different stakeholders, higher ed, the business industry, educators, to be part of the planning of creating really what is it that's going to attract our students to really, one, be engaged and do well, but two, also, to make sure that our, the school is full of students really participating in the various programs. And there was a committee that actually put this together, the frameworks, to kind of really start looking of what, what does that look like?
And can I also add, my goal is that every student in my, in the school is able to take an AP course in their time at Buckley. And so, that's why we have 11 courses currently at Buckley that range from art to AP calculus, English. So, it depends on the interest of the students so that it just gives them an exposure of what they will be getting in, in college and they could be able to, if they get a three or four or five, that means that they don't have to take that class in college. So, they just, College Board was able to get approved for any college in Connecticut to accept that, including UConn, as a passing score if they get a three or four or five. And so, that means that, I had a student when I was in a previous school that was able to come in and have 18 credits and another one that had 36 credits before they graduated from high school, just because of AP classes.
No more questions? Anyone else? Ms. Oliver?
I, just to follow up that really quickly and I have an additional question. Do we automatically provide the AP test for the AP students if they're taking the AP level class?
So, part of the contract is that they have to take the test in order to be able, because the College Board, in conjunction with our school, is paying for the test. And so, in order to be able to do that, part of the contract is that they're taking the test so that they get the full exposure of whether, of a college course.
Okay. I know you're giving me context, but I want to, so it was a hard ask, right? If you enroll in an AP course, you are, you take the test?
Yes.
And it's not teacher discretion?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. That was not always the case and Hartford Public Schools. I have a question regarding Section K, the Career and Technical Education Program Integration. It's on page number 15. I guess my question, and I know we talked a little bit before purposely, this is broad language, that will provide some opportunity for the program specs at another time, is we talked a little bit about the automotive program before and it just so happens, last week, I was in Los Angeles and able to see an amazing automotive program. Just help, help me or just share, how is it that those different pathways will be decided upon? I know that was shared before, that there was a survey that was done for automotive in particular because that building was over at Buckley, but just in any of them, from a CTE perspective, like, again, just knowing that that won't come in front of the board for a vote, if you could just share that.
Yep. So, that's a great question. So, part of, part of the design work is actually to see what, what is the industry, what's the industry demand when it comes to workforce? So, when you, when you kind of look on a national level of many districts who have gone this route of creating really career and technical programs, or sometimes even schools, is actually what is, what is the industry's demand? So, in many situations, that can end up being anywhere from, from being an early childhood provider to actually also being a nurse practitioner, right? So, so it's, but, but the conversations need to happen around the, the city and the state on what are those demands in the workforce that will actually allow us to actually build the program where students might want to actually finish this program, end up with a job immediately upon graduation, and even go to school at the same time. But what is it? So, those conversations need to happen in order to really create something that's going to be, provide the best student outcomes. But we would have to have conversations with the workforce in order to make sure that we really create those unique and meaningful pathways when it comes to career tech.
There, there are three specific partners, for lack of a better word, Ms. Oliver, that we're going to mine. So, of course, CWP, you know, Department of Labor as well. And then, you know, we also want to hear what the folks at State Department of Education within their CTE arm have to say to us. We know that we want to be strategic in leveraging, you know, the Carl Perkins Grant and that's all related to CTE. And so, we have, certainly, those are kind of like the given in terms of, you know, the conversations. But then, there's the other piece of the work that has to happen around developing the portrait of a graduate, which is looking not just at Buckley, but at all the other schools, although, you know, Weaver is in a very good place now with their pathways, but for example, Hartford High, right? You know, that Hartford High is also going to have some redo, some type of redesign work, but they have to engage in the same process. And so, what we don't want to have is duplication of pathways. We want to make sure that it's, you know, multiple opportunities.
And so, as a follow-up, so does that mean that regardless of what school you go to, that you will have opportunities across the district? Just, you know, recognizing that may be a goal, it may not be happening now, but just saying, is that something that's been considered?
So, if it were up to just me right now, so access matters, right? And I, and I want to be able to allow opportunity for our students. I'm not saying that, you know, 100% of all of, you know, the enrollment, you know, it's going to be all over the city. However, I do think is important for us to think about, you know, if we're saying that we're going to personalize the learning and meet students where they are, that is a way to do that, right? So, perhaps it's a certain number of, you know, of seats, for example, that we, that we decide to allocate throughout the city at all of our high schools.
I sort of like to get a better handle on timings. The deputy superintendent said these are conversations that we need to have. I inferred from your talk that it's conversations that we are already engaging in.
So, two things, the ones at the state level, those, those happen because we want to make sure that we leverage the Perkins funds. And so, those conversations have already started. The one that it's related to the pathways and the portrait of a graduate, that's all work that's encompassed in the last proposal that we submitted to the bar. So, we have an entire action plan that has been drafted, that is actually hopefully being approved on by the Bar Foundation. And so, that gives us, you know, the entire timeline as to when, and we can certainly share that with, with the board as to, you know, how that work is going to unfold. And then, you know, the Hartford High work has not started yet. Actually, tomorrow, there's a meeting with Chief Avila, no, Dr. Negrete and Dr. Garcia Blocker at the school site tomorrow. And so, I say all of these, that, you know, although we're talking about Buckley, this is all interrelated work as it relates to the secondary pathways for our students.
Thank you.
And I think Principal Marte had something to...
I just also wanted to add that as part of our CTE program, we do have a partnership with Goodwin College currently. And so, 10 of our students are, are taking college courses at Goodwin College this semester. And so, last year, we had a pilot program in which they were able to explore manufacturing, welding, and other programs that Goodwin College offers. And so, now, they're actually enrolled in credit-bearing classes, so they're getting three credits for that program. So, they go every Friday and then they will continue, either the same 10 students will continue next semester, or 10 new students will continue. And so, the goal is to work on a partnership that students will be able to leave high school, Buckley High School, with an associate's degree if we start the program freshman year. So, when they graduate from high school, they have to take a couple more classes that summer and will have an associate at Goodwin College. And so, it will be a dual enrollment program so that that would take care of the students that are interested in exploring other fields. And so, we also had a van that came, a bus, or, yeah, it was more of a bus that came to Buckley so that students were able to do a trip and see what, what's available so that they're, they have something to compare it with and see if that's something that they might be interested in exploring more.
Do we provide the transportation on an ongoing basis?
We do. So, they come to Buckley in the morning, have breakfast, and then they leave with one of our counselors or a staff member from Buckley to Goodwin College and then they return in the afternoon.
Any other questions? Ms. Clark?
I have another separate question, but just to add to that, just curious, is there any idea or taste to look into our community college within our district? The reason for that question, I'm all a fan about Goodwin College, but we do know that's a private institution. So, the debt that comes out when our young people are going there, I'm just slightly concerned about that. And with the pathways to a community school, I actually am a product of that. I went to high school and I was able to graduate with credits that were from Capital Community College and I was able to transfer them to anywhere. And I just know that with Goodwin, it's very difficult to transfer those credits. And again, not discrediting Goodwin, I think they're an amazing school. I'm just concerned with our young people who might not necessarily have those opportunities to go, if they have opportunities to go to other schools. Like, for me, I went to UConn, I was able to transfer my credits right from Capital to Goodwin, I mean, excuse me, to UConn. And I just know that other pathway is pretty difficult when it comes to private schools.
So, we're also working on that high school partnerships with the other, UConn, Capital, and other colleges in the area. And so, currently, the students are not paying any money for any of these courses?
Oh, no, I wasn't thinking that they were. I'm more or less thinking when they leave. So, once they have an associate degree, and my hope is that they will, they'll end with that associate degree, if they want to proceed going further with a, with a bachelor degree within the school that they have been matriculating at, the debt that they will incur will be much higher than it would if they were to go and transfer credits to a UConn, a Central, or Eastern, one of our, you know, community, excuse me, not, those are not community colleges, but within our state colleges.
State colleges.
So, that's just one, just as a, as a, wanted to know if you had a taste for that. My actual question, that kind of was more of a comment, my actual question with the outdoor athletic facilities, and maybe we haven't parched this out just yet, but when it comes to like the workers that will be working within that facility, will those, will those be like residents of Hartford? Will they, will there be, are there any specifics on how that will look? Because I know we have like a concession stand, we have people that need to man it. Just, just curious on how that will look.
So, I mean, if we were to follow our hiring policies and protocols, it would follow the same as any other positions we're posted and things of that sort. But as to what it would require, I think it's a little preliminary to determine that. If, if, I mean, you would need someone to be an operations manager for a facility of this size, but beyond that, we have, we have not gotten there to see what, and the fact that sharing is, is going to be on the same, on the same campus as a high school, is there opportunities to share positions and things of that sort? That's still to be determined.
Yeah, actually, it's beyond that concern. My actual concern is that we know that some of our young people, one of the big things as far as attraction is just employment. And so, being able to provide those opportunities for our young people to be employed within a facility in which they would be participating in would be amazing. And also, for some of our parents to be involved in that as well. So, again, I don't want to get into how we're hiring or anything. I know it's not the privy of our, of our scope of work, but just as a consideration.
Ms. Storley?
I'm not going to get into all the questions I have, so I'm going to email somebody or write some questions down, because, man, I have some great, some questions. But out of curiosity, have we leveraged anything on the federal level? Because I know you, Superintendent, talked about grants and things like that for CTE. But have we sought any partnership on, on the federal level? Have we engaged Unite Technologies? Did anyone think of possibly partnering with, was it Comcast? Had some kind of a program, CTE program? So, are we thinking about those kind of things to sort of supplement cost or is that just too far down the road?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's too far the round. I mean, this, this is actually the grant that's, that's given by the state. What I can say is that when it comes to kind of the fact that, you know, is there opportunity for other things as it comes to federal dollars? Absolutely. Because when you look at our district food and nutrition program, it's primarily driven by federal dollars. So, I do know that Mrs. Burt is constantly looking for grants and opportunity. I know she's done some upgrades in some schools when it comes to kind of these very pricey pieces of equipment in order to make sure that our schools have the best. So, that, so there are opportunities moving forward, but we haven't gotten there yet to actually start applying for those type of federal grants as it relates to the project.
Yes, Ms. Oliver?
So, with putting the commissary on the centralized location, does that then increase the capacity? So, okay, so, yeah, so, filter transparency in terms of the role at City of Hartford, now partner with Hartford Public Schools in terms of the summer meals program and just thinking about, does that then allow us to do more? It sounds like you're not, it seems you're, I'm seeing you nodding, so it seems like the answer is yes.
Yes, and yes, and yes. So, yes, the central commissary right now, what we do is we have that type of operation spread out throughout several schools and it's been incredibly complex and labor-intensive. And so, we do, currently, we do some of that production in the production kitchen downstairs in Buckley. We do some over at the Milner Middle School. We are doing some at Sports Sciences. So, for example, the Great Path students, we don't have a facility over there, so we need to cook their meals every day at sports, pack them up, and drive them across the river. Centralizing this commissary will do a couple of things, will allow us to expand our operations, especially in the summer meal program. And in the supper program, right now, we service, in the supper program, we have them in our schools, but we're also serving Ebony Horsewomen and we do the central library and we do Albany Library. And we would like to expand that out further, but our capacity is pretty much maxed and we cannot take on anymore. And so, this central commissary is going to allow us to put that production into one central location. It will allow us to actually hopefully work with some of those Buckley students, because I believe that the largest employer in the United States outside of the US government is food service. And so, when we talk about what we need to do to train our young people, food service is a very viable opportunity and certainly is a, a career that anybody can work in around the world. And so, for me, as a person who's spent her career in food service, I believe that we need to try and do some training in that. And that commissary will allow us to do that, will also allow us to do some job training. We worked this last couple of years, the Hartford Public Library had a grant from the Hartford Foundation of Public Giving for Career Pathways for Immigrants and we were their actual internship site. And we took cohorts every nine weeks and transferred them. We had some at, throughout the schools in the city. And again, I'd like to put that into one location where we could really do some very significant, very consistent training. And then, finally, that commissary will allow us to expand our farm-to-school program and we've been working with Knox and the Keeney Park Sustainability Project to get produce from them into our, into our schools. And if we can have that delivered to one location, we can deploy it out to numerous locations instead of just a couple. And so, we've been working actually to see if we can do some forward contracting with them to tell them, these are exactly the pounds that we need you to grow for us every year and we can take all of those pounds and if I can take them in one location, we could truly do a lot with it. We did some blast chilling this year of taking local produce, flash freezing it so that during the winter months, when there's no local produce available in the New England area, we will have local produce from this area on the menus for the students. So, it really has some, a million ideas and a lot of opportunity, but expanding that summer meal program, I had to turn places down. So, this summer, we had to say to people, we can't, I'm sorry, we cannot help you. And that, that's heartbreaking. So, we took on, the parks and playgrounds were large for us and it was a big, a big operation. And we had to do that in three different schools and that really was, it doubled, I'd say, you doubled the labor. We could certainly do that in about one and a half times the amount of labor. And so, when you asked last time about what we would do with those funds that we would be saving, we would be reinvesting them back into this program. We are a self-operating program and so, the Board of Education General Budget does not fund our program and we're always looking for ways and the new minimum wage laws are not going to be cheap. And when you look at one that raises up to the full $15 an hour, that's about $1 million extra in costs for our program and we need to figure out how are we going to save that. And so, this commissary for me has huge implications and the building that we're in now is just a warehousing space and that lease is up in two years and I don't, we don't have a home. I don't know where we're going. But more importantly, we can truly expand what we're doing, not just for our schools, but for this community. And I think that that's really important. And when we talk about what that commissary will look like and what that, at the concession stand, typically, it's booster clubs that do that, but we could do some training, we could really do some really good work with that and find some opportunities for parents. And we're always looking. So, if you know somebody who needs a job, you need to send them our way, because we always have jobs and we need people to work in our department. Our schools are all self-operating, we have quite a few jobs. Right now, I'd say we have about 10 to 12 positions that we haven't been able to fill since the beginning of the school year. So, please send them my way.
Yeah, I heard that, right? She said that on record.
On record, babe, we need help. And I'm looking, okay?
Yes, because there's a student, 18-year-old student right now. We need a job.
And I'm ready. And now, you know that, so those who don't know, we know that I'm also an adjunct professor at Manchester Community College. So, when you talk about that connection, it's extremely important to me and I'm a product of Manchester Community College myself, a product of St. Joseph College, and a product of UConn. And so, it is very important... And so it is very important to me to have that connection. And I hire from that group of people, the students of that hospitality program. We've hired from ground level to supervisor positions and who have worked their way up with us. It's really important to me on a personal and professional level. So this opportunity is huge.
One question, last question for the night for me. We have about six hundred home students. How would, how would the food service, how are we making sure that we maximize the food service for these students?
Well, right now, we have, and I don't know that list off the top of my head, but there's always, that's an ever-changing list. But with our community eligibility program, all meals in Hartford are free. Or shouldn't you say, that's a terrible word to me to use, they are at no cost. Because there's a cost to them on our end, food cost and labor cost. But we provide breakfast, lunch, and dinner at quite a few locations. And so one of the reasons I want to have a dinner program at the central library is that that's where some of those people hang out. And so you find there's a lot of people, there's a lot of activity over there. So this.
Homeless students or just homeless people?
Homeless students, anybody. And so anybody eighteen and under can participate in the summer meal program. And in the supper program, they need to be in some type of programming. But we are opening up the Buckley supper program, started this on Monday, so that we open it up right at the end of the school day, and any student can participate. If we find a need with a central commissary, I could certainly work with and work with the state to figure out where is some funding to provide some adult meals. Or, for example, when there's an emergency feeding, we've partnered with the city on numerous occasions and fed at their shelters. And so doing that, in trying to do it from this location and this location, it's just been incredibly challenging, limiting, and the sanitation piece of that makes me a little nervous. So again, if I can control this in one location, I think we truly could do, I don't think, I know we will be able to do more. And so the homeless students are in the schools. I've worked with the principals. If there's not a supper program there, we still will have them come down at the end of the day and give them something to eat. If there is a supper program there, I had one, a couple of students at one of the schools, and the principal called me and said, they're not staying after school, and your supper program here starts at four o'clock. Is there any way you can feed them? And that was just not a problem. I just made the staff come in a little earlier, and they fed those few kids before they fed the rest of the kids in the supper program. So on an individual basis, we're working with how can we identify and what can we do. But the community eligibility, allowing every student to eat at no cost, and no worry about what your income and or what your issues are, has made a real difference in this district.
Yeah, I just want to jump in, I want to apply you for your work. Food insecurity is a huge issue. We don't talk about it a lot in the city. And the work at the library in particular, we have a lot of young people who are going hungry, who are not saying things until they have a trusted adult and asking for extra food for them and their siblings. So we need to do more of this, and there is federal funding to support some of this. The adults are harder, but we've been partnering and getting some generous donations on that. So I look forward, especially from a State of Hartford perspective, to continue to partner with you on it, because it was with great appreciation, and our kids really loved the food this summer. And we love the hot meals, we were able to provide them as well, so it went really well. So thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
I do have a question on, I have a few questions for the central fieldhouse. But in regards to food service, I'm wondering, will this help some of the inequities? I've said it many times, my daughter attends Annie Fisher Montessori, which farm-to-table is their thing. They're also in the building with STEM. My daughter, we don't, she doesn't even eat meat. She cannot get a salad. But if you are a STEM student, you can get a salad. So I have to pack a lunch every Tuesday and Thursday, because the other, most lunches, she's getting a bagel, which I don't think is an adequate lunch. But on Tuesdays and Thursdays, bagels is not an option. So she can't ever get a salad, and she loves salad, but she can't ever get a salad. Neither can any of her classmates. For years, I've tried to fight it. But if she was an Annie Fisher STEM student, she could get a salad every day. And that's a, that's an inequity. And you've, you've been wonderful, you've met with me. She doesn't like veggie burgers, she just doesn't, I grew up eating meat. I don't eat it any longer, so I want a veggie burger. She's never eaten meat, so fake meat to her is like, I don't, why would I want fake meat if I don't eat real meat? But in the same school, in the same school building, kids can get one kind of lunch and other kids get a totally different kind of lunch.
So in the past, so first of all, let me say that we're not offering the chef salads at the K eight schools throughout the district now. So that, that kind of, because of the increase in the labor costs, we've had to make some adjustments. And so.
That must be new, though.
This year, yes, yes.
It was definitely an option for other students.
The operational aspects of trying to provide two different types of, so at Annie Fisher's school, we have a kitchen that was really designed for Annie Fisher's school and to service that number of students. And now we have, we're trying to pack for the classroom. And so what's happening at the Montessori program is that that's classroom feeding, which requires packaging each classroom into carts, into pans, into counting. And the actual operational flow of that is incredibly overwhelming, and it taxes the staff and the location of that. And so yes, having a central commissary would allow us to do that type of production in one large location with a, with a larger amount of staff and would be able to ship that out and distribute that on an equal basis. The other disparity that we find in the district is the schools, and we have decreased them significantly since I've come here, is the schools that don't even have a kitchen location whatsoever, or they just have a re-therm oven. So you look at the Tansas, I'm going to call it the old Dwight, because that's the building we're talking about here, has an oven and a custodial closet. And so what we can serve there is only a TV dinner-style meal. It's the same food. And the machine that we have at Buckley is we are personally packaging every food item for that meal. It doesn't look the same. So when you put a chicken patty in a TV dinner-style container, and you've got a Saran wrap over it, it steams a little different than if you baked it in an open oven. It's the exact same product. And we purchased that machine and wrote a grant to get it, that was a US grant, was because we couldn't find stuff in the open market that was comparable to the quality that we wanted. And so we are working very hard to try and, you know, to eliminate those disparities. We package every, if we can't buy the same product already wrapped, for the schools that have to have things wrapped, it's due to their facility and the health licenses, we are actually packaging all of that ourselves. And so having a central commissary will even alleviate that further. And maybe then I can put those chef salads back out to all of the schools. And that's what we're looking for to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so back to the burger, it's a black bean burger. But I'm happy to have some conversation with what I can do. We have a hummus plate, like, please call me or Brunella.
No, I want to say in your defense, you came out, you did a taste test. She did everything, and this girl was like, I don't want a fake, I want a salad. So you did, you tried to accommodate, but it was just something that could not happen. And if you know certain kids, because they're looking, like, you had a salad at lunch? When they're interacting at after-school programs with children from the other side of the school? So they're like, you get a salad, I can't get a salad. So that is a thing that is hard to explain to a kid. They can have one, you can't.
It is a challenge, believe me, it is a huge challenge. And it is a huge piece of why we think that we do need to get, not that we think, we know. We need this ability to be able to equal that playing field and to get the same product across the board to all of our schools and not just a few of our schools, and make salads for every school. Be able to get the products, like at Great Path, what we're doing is we're cooking that over at Sports. We're driving that over, that's in a bulk container. What we're doing at Dwight is in an individual container. So I'd really, if we can get all that on the same level, we would be farther along than we are today. I think we've come a far way, but we've got some more room to grow here.
I missed that. Could the baby have a salad, or do we have to wait for your facility to get?
No, we got to make from our facility. I'll be very honest, we cut it out, we did, we had to really look at the labor cost. That, just the going from ten twenty-five to eleven dollars today, October one, is an eighty thousand dollar increase to our labor cost without doing anything else. Okay, so that wasn't going to drop out of the sky. We had to really take a hard look at, how are we going to fund this? And we looked at the chef salads and said, as much as a diet, from a dietitian's point of view, I would love to eat all this.
That was another thing, like, I am a registered dietitian, it's extremely important to me.
However, when we analyzed the amount of labor it takes and the actual what was getting consumed, that's when we made our final decision. When you go through a cafeteria and you watch the students who take that chef salad, especially the younger ones, they take about two bites, and they throw a lot of it away. And so I'm sure your child, who's a vegetarian, would chow through the whole thing, and I'd be happy. But we would see them just eat the protein and the bread, maybe a bite, a carrot, or a piece of the cucumber, and a whole punch of that chef salad was being tossed in the garbage. And so when we had to weigh out, where are we going to cut some costs? We knew we needed to cut some labor costs, we needed to cut some food costs, and that was the item. So we have expanded some of the cold choices. We now have a, and I will address the bagel yogurt plate, because as an adult, that is a challenge for me as an adult. But as a registered dietitian, that bagel's a whole-grain bagel. It comes with a cheese stick, a yogurt, and a milk. So somebody who, anybody who knows me knows that calcium's the thing I'm going to tout the most. It's one of the least consumed nutrients in our country. And that meal provides your whole day's worth of dairy. And I think it's really important that we look at how we're going to get our students to get to their peak bone mass. Because if you see how many students in our district don't drink milk, or drink a lot of soda and counteract the amount of calcium that they're getting, that concerns me greatly. And I actually developed that menu many, many years ago, as I was out in cafeterias and watching what parents were sending in from home. And they weren't sending sandwiches. They were actually sending those types of hand foods that those kids could eat. They'd have some slices of cheese, or they'd send their child with a yogurt. And I thought, we can do that. I don't need you to send that from home, we can do that. And so I do find that the younger kids love that, and the goal for us is to make sure they actually consume it.
What about the high school students?
High school kids, they prefer the hot meals more. I have that in every level.
Right, but you might have some students, my, my son doesn't eat meat.
I have the bagel yogurt plate, we have a hummus plate, we have a, and if they go, we don't make the black bean burger every day because our students, I shouldn't say that, there are some schools that they know every student, every day, they have two or three students who are going to take that black bean burger, and we make it. And then we have other schools where we say to the students, when you're down for breakfast, just let them know, today you want the black bean burger, and we're happy to make it for you. And then we have other list of other vegetarian products. And so our cafeteria staff is really good about working with their population and knowing their children and knowing I need to make this. So this summer at the library, for example, we had a large Indian population there who are vegetarians. And so my staff that was assigned there went off the menu and said, all right, I know that they're going to be here in this library every day. And so she brought two, she brought the hot meal that we had planned, and then she brought a vegetarian option so that we could start servicing those students. And we, she actually got that count up about thirty a day by doing that. And so we will work with that on an individual basis. It's a challenge, and it's certainly a challenge over at Great Path. We have a serving line in a hallway. You know what it's like there, with a sink. So if we forget something, it's not there. Or last week, when the strap broke and the cart fell over in the truck, and all the food was in that cart, we now have to figure out, what are we going to do? Because we had to run around the district to find food to bring it over to Great Path. So that's a challenge in a non-production school, and a central commissary will help us to really alleviate some of those problems.
Any further questions, Ms. Browdy?
For the, and I apologize if it was covered. For the Hartford Public Schools Central Field House, did we discuss how that's being, has it been determined how it's going to be managed?
So that was one of Ms. Clark's questions of how we actually were going to staff it. Right, right now, that it's still preliminary. I think if we were just to look at kind of, kind of what's being presented, we know we'll probably need a sort of kind of operations manager. But beyond that, we haven't decided what would, what would the staffing look like, knowing that it's going to be part of a shared property in a sense. So there might be positions that, that might work in, at the high school and then possibly at the fieldhouse. So, but we have not come to those, gotten to those decisions yet.
Okay, do we have a total cost of the, or is it, could it be separated? Because I know it's the fieldhouse, and it's also, that's where food service is going to be, right? But for the fieldhouse.
So the.
I'm sorry, we don't have that broken up into how much it's going to cost for the fieldhouse, how much it's going to cost for the food service, how much it's going to cost for our SEO office. It's all encompassing and it's still in design. We're very early in design. And as far as the education specs, we've begun to program it for the school. But the actual design doesn't begin till after we actually have the architect under contract to design the rest of the building. And that won't begin till after we've gone through these steps of approving the ad specs, approving the superintendent, given superintendent authorization to apply for school grant and the completion of the grant with the state. And then we have to put the architect under contract to design the building. The architect has gotten ahead because we expect things to move forward and has begun to program it. But we actually don't have an architect under contract to design this new building yet.
I can actually add that to the agenda for the next meeting that we have at the state. Just, I'm just wondering what, you know, how that would be costed out in terms of, like, a dollar amount for, right, all of these pieces, resco and commissary and.
We can ask for a breakout of how these pieces are going to cost. How much is the extra school, of that hundred and forty-nine million dollars? How much will go towards the education, or how much will be budgeted for the education facilities? How much will be for the fieldhouse, how much for the commissary? And there's also, freight shop is going to be at that end. But there's some efficiencies of doing it combined rather than trying to price it separate.
So one of the things that we know, we can get to probably a guesstimate, because there are things like permits that are surfacing, things that need to be required that, that will be part of this grant request, the hundred and forty-nine, that might change or alter kind of designs based on, on those type of things. That was the conversation we had in the last meeting of things that, that come up as part of the, the design and the construction of the facility.
I mean, we could probably get at it from a square footage perspective, but I know that that's not, you know, at the end of the day, given, you know, furniture and equipment and all that good stuff, the numbers will shift.
We could definitely develop guesstimates, we won't know the actual dollars until we actually go out to bid. And those numbers will determine what the actual cost will be.
We are applying for one grant and not separate grants for each piece.
No, it's all, it's all one grant.
Can piggyback on Ms. Browdy's question about the management. I know a concern has been as to access. We guarantee that this is a, a central fieldhouse for the district, and not that the nearest school will be privileged.
No, it's, 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 it has been made clear that this is actually for district use. And that's why when we talk about staffing, obviously, there would have to be someone like an operations or facility manager, or someone that will be able to manage schedules, which it would include the principal of Buckley or the A.D. to request formally space based on the procedures and protocols that we need, so that the facility can be used by all our schools throughout Hartford.
The architect has to leave, I know he has an engagement. Is there any questions for the architect?
I have more questions, but not for the architect.
I just have one small question, not for the architect either. And are you estimating the operational cost of this facility?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Yeah, until we actually complete the design and be clear on all the, all the amenities in the building and how we're going to use it, there's going to be a much deeper discussion of how it's going to be managed and operated and funded. There's a lot, a long way to go.
But that discussion and that deciding, does that come before this board?
I, I don't know.
Which, which piece? What was you just described? What was the initial question?
How do we determine the operation, operation funding of the central fieldhouse?
I don't think it comes before the board, but it can come before the board for, like, as a report, in terms of how much.
I guess what I'm saying is, you're asking us to vote on something that we don't know. We don't, we have questions that cannot be answered. Then the fallback would be, well, we don't have the answer right now. But when you do get the answer, it's still not something that comes before this board. So there's no comfort in it, for me at least. Because we, we're just saying, yes, we don't know how much is going here, there. We don't know any of it. We don't know how it will be managed. We don't know anything, but we're asked to vote on it tonight, is what I'm saying. So that's what I'm trying to get comfortable with that part. But if, if you don't, if you don't have an answer, you, there's no answer.
Point of clarification, please? So, but this, but the operations dollars will be part of the annual budget process, right? So therefore, it's, when it comes to the actual operations, it will have to come in front of the board, because that will be presented to us as part of the budget, correct?
What I heard was the operational design, and so that's a different thing than the cost of the operation.
No, no, my question was cost, operational cost of the facility. That was my question. And it was, the question was, have you estimated what?
So, yes, so what.
No, someone else was talking about design, and then I, that's not the question.
So what we do know, right, right now, Buckley Food and Nutrition is part of our operating district budget.
Right.
Right, so, so it's already accounted for in our budget, and it's. So, so it's, it's already accounted for in our budget in its current place. As part of, as part of these ad specs, this is, this would be a renovation. What we do know is that by moving nutrition to, to a new space, will be a cost savings to, to the district of $690,000 to $890,000. What we do know is that by, by these enhancements, there will be some enhancement that will improve the usage of the facilities and, and possibly, possibly see a cost savings in the operation. Of course, of what, what that will be, I don't know. What we do know is that it's, the school's operation currently is part of our district budget as well as food and nutrition. Um, so, so we can see possible savings there, um, moving forward that will be reinvested into, into the district.
So I think what I'm hearing is when it's time to hire an operational manager for that facility, we would like for that person to be, come here. Uh, and to, not necessarily interview, I don't know how that works. Um, but basically, um, just to figure out whether that particular individual understands our vision. One, and two, if it's a central facility, um, then it's, it's pretty much this, it belongs to the board, correct? So, so yeah, so I, I think is this one of those things where I don't think it's a cabinet level position where you have to go through all the, the hoops. But, um, it is a facility and a resource that, um, has tremendous amount of importance outside of our spectrum. And so I think we're just trying to do our due diligence. That's what I'm hearing. I don't want to speak to you.
I, I think what I hear is, and, and we know that Buckley certainly has been in our budget and we know the food operation has been in our budget and, and we're just making some changes in them. But we are adding a new operation, which is the operation of a central field house. So I, I think the question is generally, do we have an estimate of how much this new operation might, might cost? And the answer is no.
No, so we don't know. We don't know square footage in terms of, you know, what is the, the, the electricity, the heating costs in that specific space, right? So all of those things are not, uh, we don't have that yet. Um, you know, we might get further into a look, you know, timeframe and then realize that we need to take away, I don't know, some square footage or add square footage. And so for us to determine, there's no way we can determine that now. Um, what I was also hearing was around the operation, the management of it. And so, um, that's, I didn't hear, and, and what I heard from Ms. Brody was, you know, what's, what's going to be like the investment? What is it going to cost? So those are, those are three different things that I'm hearing, right? The operation in terms of the facility, heating cost, heating costs and all of those, equipment potentially and design. And then, then I heard staffing. So those are three very different things. Ultimately, it's part of the budget. But in terms of designing for those now at this, like what you're voting on, it is, that's, that's not where we're at yet. Okay.
I think, I think some of the clarity is, and again, forgive me if I'm speaking for you, Ms. Brody, is that we're voting on, on something that, let's just say, when we're finished with the project, that we can't afford to operate the project. And so there are some times when we vote on things and things change and it doesn't necessarily come back to us as the, as a board. So I think that's where the clarity is coming from. Although we're voting on something and we would love to see it based on what we're reading, things happen and things change. And so therefore, it's like kind of a, it is a, you know, a very scary place to be in that we're voting on something and then it might change two years from now. We might not necessarily know of all of the changes because we're thinking it's going to be exactly like this. And obviously, you know, communication does happen in between, but sometimes you remember what you vote on versus what changes occur. Um, and that's just part of that. But, um, for the, um, structural part, this is not the only time this is coming before us, correct?
Correct.
I just remember with the Weaver plan, we had phase one, two, three, four. It's just similar than what we're going to have going forward. Okay.
There'll be schematic design, there'll be what the actual design of the school will be and the whole entire project. And you'll be able to vote and view on that.
Okay, so for the, um, what did you ask earlier? You asked a question about if we had any questions. Oh, architect. We'll be able to, I don't have an architect question currently just because I'm not an architect. So all I see is the dimensions here. And I don't know if that's enough space for what we needed for. I see that we have here 6,000, I'm assuming this is square foot. It says NSF. I'm not sure. I don't know what that means.
Yes, net square footage.
What is it?
NSF stands for net square footage.
Okay, see? I was close. See, I know a little bit. Um, so I can't say if this is accurate enough until we actually see that next phase. So I'm hoping that when we do that next phase, that, um, the wonderful gentleman will be available to discuss those things. Because I'm sure that's where, I know my questions will come in as far as the architect of, and the design of the school.
Yeah, the design of the school will be, will be presented to the board for approval.
Okay, thank you.
And what we're trying to get through is what we need to submit an application for a grant. And the other pieces will start getting put together once we know that we've got the grant. Uh, I, I can say that at, at our last meeting with, uh, the Office of School Construction, uh, Mr. Diamantis was questioning the, the size of this whole thing. And, and I asked him then, well, if you think this is too big, can we approve this now? And what he said to me was, it's not a problem. We can always take away. If we think this is too much, when we start putting it together, we can always take away. What we can't do is put in an application for something and then say we need more.
And I think that's the hesitation. So to, to that exact point, if we need more, let's just say the facility is built. Now, I'm more now speaking for the actual facility of the, um, what's the proper term? The field house. If we need more, we won't know until it's actually built because we have no rough estimates.
And, and when we talk about needing more, we're talking about construction costs, not operations.
Absolutely. And I'll give you an example. For the Weaver Field House, we know that when it, I mean, the Weaver construction, we knew that there were added costs after. So there was additional cost for the flooring of the basketball. That's additional cost and additional, um, unit that needed to be built in order to house the flooring. So those were all additional costs that we did not foresee. And we had to go out and figure out ways, not me, but personally, like others had to figure out ways and for us to get that money because that was an added need. So I'm just speaking in high level of we, we're voting on something and it doesn't necessarily change what I'm going to do, but just we're voting. The precaution of voting on something where we don't know, it does, it does become peculiar because to your point, we can say high level, but again, high level might not be everything that we need in order to be successful.
You're absolutely correct.
What I'm suggesting is that we're voting on something that's bigger, that's likely bigger than what we actually need.
And then there are other parameters as well. As I'm thinking, you raised the, the example of, of the flooring and whether or not those extras are considered extras or things that the state, you know, would consider as part of the initial bundle, if you will. So all of those things kind of come as we go. I don't know that, that flooring, I'm not sure if that was considered an extra. It was an extra, right? I'm trying to think of like, there were like four extras. And so that would, that would have not made it to the initial.
That was a beautiful extra. Thank you.
I, I'm just saying, right, so you used that example, but there are other examples in which we know are like non-negotiables that need to be part of from the get-go. Whereas that example was an added, um, feature. But it comes as we go along. So there's no way for us to.
Exactly. Whether it's an extra, it could be whether it's whatever. It's one of the things that we did not foresee the cost to happen until after happened. And so therefore, extra or not extra is just something that was added to that we did not see that cost occurring. So now it's a cost of adding a person to come in, train, to do things that we did not expect, expect to happen. And so going forward, those are kind of the things that we have to think about. If we're going to talk about giving the whole package, why not put the extras within the package? And if we don't need them, then we don't need them. Those are things, if we're going to talk about big picture, then we do big picture with the added. If someone says, hey, take a marker and draw the world, you're going to put the world in there. You're not going to limit yourself. You're going to add the extras. So that's kind of bigger picture and we can kind of go back and forth in the semantics of how it's done. But I'm just saying that you're voting on, we're voting on something, we got, whether it's an extra or not. We just, it's something that happened and it's a cost that we had to incur or got money from to help support some of the things that's what's going on within our district.
What's, what's included in the ad specs? Won't include adding certain components or amenities in the field house? That hasn't even been determined yet. This is just not our intention to proceed forward. There'll be additional discussions, including with our director and our offices, about when we go forward in design, what we're putting in. Same as in the building. We have a general framework of what the education of the building is. But we don't, we're not at the point where we're saying, well, the walls are going to be made of sheetrock. The floor is going to have vinyl floor over here, carpet. This is, we're going to have a field house, a full-size competition field house. We know, we've done enough that we know we want to, we would like to have a wood basketball court. These are things that the architect is going to have to work to try to incorporate into the design. We have things that we really want for this field house that everyone will benefit from. But this is, we're talking so far down the road. And I understand there's always an operating cost. This is an additional asset that the district doesn't have. Anytime you have a new asset, it's going to cost, it's the same as if you build another school. It benefits the kids, but there's additional cost. We are creating quite a bit of savings from removing the board of ed out of central office, relocating, um, the food services, we call it commissary. Those are our last two leases, building leases that we have in the district. This built, this building, well, let me make all our building leases. And we've been working at this for almost 10 years to give portable building leases, swing spaces, one by one. We've knocked them all out. These are the last two hurdles we have. There's always a cost when, when you create something bigger and better. It's never cheaper.
But do you, do you understand why we would not be totally comfortable? Because we sat in the same space on a Weaver project and we thought we were getting bigger and better. And then we, then we were talking about alternates. Oh, you can't have this, you can't have that. I don't even know if, I, last I heard, they were having the old, um, pool. When I swim at Weaver, the old pool changing room, whatever you call it. So we, that's why we're like, okay.
And this is an opportunity to make sure we share the information and be transparent as we move forward of what is developing.
So, so I'm, I'm assuming if we don't know it, how much it's going to cost, how we going to manage facility, we definitely don't know, um, as far as, and I'm not saying priority within our schools because I think we have enough athletic directors to work out priority in all that use of the facility. But my thing is the use of the facility for people who do not go to our schools and that are not even from our town. Because when we see these things get built up so nice and you ride by, it's not us. There's no, there's hardly any kids that look like our kids that are on these fields and all these things that we're putting up in Hartford. So I have a, um, a concern about the priority of this facility because it's in a location that's ideal for the suburbs. You don't have to ride through any of our community to get to it. You can come off 91 and go right up Locust Street and get to this facility as opposed to some of our other schools that you got to ride up our streets to get to. So it's, it's definitely, I think, when I think of this facility, I think of, oh, yes, it's good for Hartford. But I know it's some thought behind it that is good for other people too. So I have a concern about the use of this facility and how that will be prioritized. And I don't think you're prepared to answer that because we don't even know about the other things.
I don't, I don't think that's part of, of the construction thought. I think that is something that is entirely in our venue because that is our policy and it is this board that determines policy. So if we can establish a policy for use, that's up to us to do.
Yeah, I, I just want to get additional clarification. If, uh, Ms. Brody, you're speaking about prioritizing within the district or out facing priorities? I mean, the priority is going to be for us as district to leverage the facility.
Yeah, I led with that. I don't think that within district and within Hartford Public Schools that we have capable athletic directors that can work that out. That's not my concern. I'm saying, I know this facility is not going to only be used for Hartford Public Schools, or am I wrong?
No, but when, when, when you.
When we get into renting, this is going to be like, this is the facility. So people are going to be waiting for this facility to be built. And we have a lot of, we have a lot of Hartford clubs and stuff that would want to use it. But I'm not talking about, I'm not, I'm not, I'm definitely not talking about Hartford Public Schools. I don't have a worry there because that's under your control. Um, I'm talking about towns who are going to be hosting tournaments and all of this stuff. And how does that get prioritized?
So we would need policy, but in terms of prioritizing the external requests, I just want to make sure that I understand. Outside of Hartford Public Schools and outside of the city of Hartford and/or both, city of Hartford and external, that's the, that's the.
So there's Hartford Public Schools, then there's the city of Hartford because we do want to be community. You're in this town. This is a facility for the town. Because it's definitely huge for that. But I'm saying the suburbs who are waiting for the ribbon to be cut on this facility. And that is, that, that, that is, um, a concern. Because when I go to other towns and participate in athletic events, like say, for instance, Hill House, it's not some random place. It's New Haven people hosting at Hill House. But we all know New Haven, I, in my opinion, does things better than Hartford and I'm not afraid to say it as it's recorded. With controlling and having things for their town as the priority. And it goes further than that. But this, and I'm, and I'm assuming when Hill House was thought of, that's, this is, and like I said earlier, and I won't get deep into that, this project has been wanting to happen for years. That has, that was, that predated anybody sitting up here. So I would buy, I would be naive to think that this project is not wanted for other than Hartford. So my, my, my hope is that, and I know we can create policy around it or whatever, but just know that this was thought of. And I don't know if we were like, you're thinking of me, wow, you want to give me this wonderful facility. It's thinking of, you could have this facility, but at the same time, the region can enjoy this facility. And I don't, and I, and I don't want it to be, um, as such. But I'm hoping that we'll be able to, um, have something that prioritizes that.
So policy and regs, you know, are the way that we're going to maintain the integrity of, of that commitment at two levels.
And that is the job of this.
That's through policy and then regulations on us. So there, you know, there could, there's a two, two, two levels of oversight of that.
Yeah, uh, sure. I appreciate the point. Uh, I was looking at community uses in general and it's from general language. Again, understanding broad language. Um, I do want to second though, and I look forward as a member of the policy committee, for us to prioritize this because overall across all of our facilities, there, um, besides the first come, first served, um, there's that issue about the revenue and some of the organizations that have the revenue versus those who do not and how we balance that. And that is something that, uh, we are hearing from our residents about, right? So, um, I, uh, I look forward to the conversation across the district and, and how that feeds into this. So thank you for bringing it up, Ms. Brody.
I, I don't want to continue to derail the conversation, but I just want to respond because I think it's important to ground that in, that work that's, that's either happening or going to happen around the equity policy. Right? Because I think there's a relation there to just access around the city, you know, from an equity perspective, even if it's around, um, you know, students that are not in Hartford Public Schools. We, we know that we have students in Hartford that attend other schools and that they potentially would want to also have access to this facility. So, um, you know, it can live not only in a policy around the field house, but it can also live in policies, in other places in our policies as well. but it can also live in policies, in other places in our policies as well.
Any other questions?
I just have a clear, so this, this project that will not, um, so this did not go through or anything, any, any touches by like the school building committee. So, this is out of that.
We did present at the School, uh, Choice and Facilities Committee this week.
No, the school, this, the school building committee. Is that what it's called?
The Hartford School Building Committee, not, not yet.
Doesn't require-
We can't do anything.
Until we actually have a grant and we have an approved project. And then, um, the city turns it over to Hartford School Building Committee to build it.
Okay, so they do, it will end up in their lap, okay.
And the Hartford School Building Committee, primarily we, we monitor things after they've been approved. We don't start projects.
But it doesn't go anywhere near there until after there's been approval, not just here. This is step one. Then it's to the state, after state approval, then it goes back, it comes back.
And this is ninety-five percent reimbursement, correct?
Yes.
So, how does that work? Cause I'm, I'm totally ignorant to city council, um, procedures. How, how does that, cause five percent is gonna be paid for from the city? So, how does, have we talked with the city to say, are you okay with this five percent? Like, has that been, that's step one, I'm assuming?
That's correct.
That's part of the process.
That's part of the process.
Okay.
Um, last question, I'm, I'm hoping, this is the last question, just, um, no, that wasn't for me, that wasn't for me. Um, sorry. Um, um, just after this is the October tenth, eleventh deadline, I guess, admission process. And then what's the next steps? And then when will we expect phase one, I guess, approval part? Like, how, what's the steps?
On the renovation of the Buckley High School. Um, once all the approvals are in place and we have all our documents in order for the state school construction grant, then the next step will be to get the architect on the contract to begin the formal design of this new campus.
So, I understand the procedure, it's just a timeframe.
So, so, so the, the first, the first phase of it actually is the Central Office. So, we would have to be, um, moved into the fourth floor Buckley by the end of-
Next.
Next year.
August.
Of Au-, August. So, that's the first. So, once, once that phase, uh, um, happens, then we go into phase two, which is, um, this, uh, project that you see here, which is the academic building, the commissary and things of, of that. They begin that construction. Um, so, so that would be the other part of the construction project. And that will take, um, will begin the following year.
Okay, so then this is scheduled to be twenty twenty-
Completed twenty twenty-four.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Completed twenty twenty-four, the entire project.
Entire project. So, the last part is the facilities, correct? I mean, the field house.
Well, part of the last part will be the site work, but, um-
Oh, okay. I'm just looking at the time.
When we take, that, that will come with the design work of how-
This, this is an occupied renovation. Um, there's still a lot of thought to be, not only in the design of how the construction is gonna occur to minimize the impact on everyone that's gonna be in the building during construction. So, those, we haven't, very, at this point is very early. This is very different than how the, every one of the projects I've seen in twenty years, that we actually have an architect before we have an education specs approved. In the past, the Board of Ed and Superintendent's Office create the ed specs. And it goes to the Board of Ed for approval, before anything is even done. We're, we're trying to speed up the process that we actually have an architect that's been involved in phase one, which is the Board of Ed relocation and has provided feedback through this process going forward. But normally, we, the only thing we'd be discussing is these aspects. We wouldn't have any idea of what the design is gonna look like, when it's gonna be started, when it's gonna be over, what, what is the schedule. I mean, this is rare that we have so much information prior to approving the specs.
Okay, thank you. So, at least we could just say we have a target of twenty twenty-four for everything to be completed.
That's correct.
Thank you so much.
So, is there a motion to approve the ed specs?
So moved.
Second.
Second. So, all those in favor of approving the ed specs signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Oh, the ayes have it, the ed specs are approved. And item two point two is authorization of the grant application, which goes together with just giving permission for, uh, the group to apply to the state for the money. Any questions on that? So, is there a motion to approve the grant application?
So moved, second.
All those in favor of approving the grant application, uh, the authorization for the grant application?
Give the superintendent the authorization to, to apply.
Uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, the ayes have it, the authorization is given.
Thank you.
And thank you. And so, we are done with the business portion, uh, of our meeting. And we'll move on to the workshop that we had planned for today. Thank you. And while our workshop presenters are coming up, I just want to make a comment that I've made to you many times, is that at this meeting and at many meetings, I hear talk about all the wonderful things that our district is doing. And we don't seem to be able to get that out to the public. We sort of have an image problem. So, I see our communications director, uh, sitting back there, so this goes for Mr. Fergus also. Uh, we need to find ways to get our story out.
Yes. Duly, duly noted.
So, Madam Superintendent.
Yes. Um, good evening. We are shifting to the workshop portion. And, um, we're gonna take, uh, dive into some of our progress and, and also challenges with regard to, um, literacy. Um, the, the, the way that we thought about the presentation tonight was to look at, um, two specific data sets, right? Along, uh, the Smarter Balance Assessment and our PSAT SAT, but also to ground that within, uh, the investments that we have made in terms of, you know, staffing investments, uh, programmatic investments, and then, uh, professional development investments that we have made. And so, um, we know that there's a lot more data, but, you know, those, um, I'm hoping to present to you, you know, in report form, knowing that, you know, we have limited time here today. And so, Dr. Negron is gonna take us through the presentation. But, um, in terms of the, the format, feel free to, you know, stop the presentation at any time if you have any specific, uh, questions or comments, um, as to the data.
Good evening. Um, so before I get started, I wanted to, um, point out that, um, to make sure that there's clarity in terms of the terms that we are, that I'm going to be referencing today during the presentation, we did put together for you a sheet with terms, abbreviations, and definitions that I'm hoping will be beneficial as we're, as I'm going through the presentation. Um, we did remember that last year, at the time that we were engaging in a similar presentation, that there, there was a need and you had voice wanting to have such a document. So, this was our first, um, attempt, um, to be able to do that. Okay? So, um, we're gonna be taking a deep dive into, um, literacy, um, this evening. Thank you. And before I, um, go into the data that I'm going to be highlighting, I wanted to ground that in the major actions, um, that you have, you heard all through last year. And you have continued to heard, um, through all the other, um, committee work that we have been engaging in. So, um, once again, the fact that we, since, since the beginning of last year, focusing on guided reading, pre-K through five, and then close reading across content areas for grade six through twelve. And this has been our intentional effort in addressing, um, the literacy needs, um, of our students so that we can better prepare them for college and career and beyond. Um, so as you know, within guided reading, uh, we are, we're operating within a balanced literacy approach. Um, that's the, the method, methodology that we are employing in these grade levels. And basically what that means is that that segment of instruction, um, devoted for literacy, is broken down into whole class instruction, small group instruction, and independent practice. And we are calling out that segment dedicated to guided reading, where you would then have a teacher utilizing, um, data analysis to identify and group his or her students and being then able to work, um, with a small group of students ranging up to six students and, um, working intimately with them as they're going through those rotations in a classroom. Um, also last year, you know that we moved into the strategy of the ELEAD coaches or the instructional coaches, right? Centralizing, um, that effort, um, to make sure that we were, um, truly working on coaching, um, as a term, um, as a term that is utilized. And also last year, started working on our continuous improvement process and leveraging the work that we're doing with DataWise, how to get better at understanding, um, our data and using the da-, the data to inform, um, instruction. And then on the close, um, reading side, looking at the strategy of, of close reading, but then being very intentional about what skill is it that we want to target via close reading, right? So, I lifted, um, for you, um, some of the focus that has been, um, devoted when we speak about, um, close reading and the work that we were working on last year. So, now I wanna talk about the data, knowing that that has been the work that we have been engaging in. So, um, this particular slide gives you a view as to, um, one of our measures that we name in the DME, which is our third grade proficiency, right? And this does not mean that we don't care about kindergarten, first, second, or grades about third grade. But we knew that third grade was definitely a grade level that we wanted to keep an eye on because it is so crucial in accordance to the research. Right? Usually, it's, it's, it's a measure to let us know how well are we setting up students for success later on. Um, and we also know that that's that period when there is a transition from, you know, in the earlier grades, we are teaching students how to read, but then we transition to using reading to then, to then learn, engage in learning. So, I do wanna spend some time in this particular, um, uh, graph that you see to your left because I wanted to ground that on where we have been as a district. Um, and to make sure that we are not losing sight of the context that we were living in at the time. So, you see there all the way back to twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. Um, in twenty fifteen, sixteen, we were about at a twenty-four point four percent of our students meeting grade level standards in grade three. And that talks about the entire landscape of students, right? Every kid who in that year was in grade three, whether they were in a magnet school, not magnet, um, whether they were identified as English learners or students with disability, um, it's students that were in that grade three and taking a snapshot of how they perform in terms of the Smarter, um, Balance Assessment. And then use, at that time, I wanna point out that in my homework, I learned that there were a lot of, um, supports that were available, um, during that, that era of, of twenty fourteen, fifteen, fifteen and sixteen. Some that I do wanna highlight and lift. Um, for example, the fact that at some point, there were about seventy-plus coaches. And it was common to find two coaches dedicated to one single, to one single building. Um, so they were not being split. You often had either a literacy or reading coach, or you had a math coach. But again, dedicated to, to one building, that's what they were, um, focusing on. Also, at the time, I learned that there was an entire department of interventionists, right? So, there were dedicated people, um, to support the schools in being able to provide interventions. I also learned that at that point, um, like, everybody had access to those interventions. Um, and I wanted to point that out to then make a contrast, um, to the realities of the times, right? That, that we are experiencing. So, I, I learned like there were, everybody had licenses per kid. In the last, um, committee, uh, Teaching and Learning Committee, I spoke about, um, some of the investments. And at this time, one license per kid in every single building, where now, um, I basically have to ration the licenses and where they're going to go and who they're going to support. So, I wanted to pull out that reality. So, there was, there was that then, that dip, the, the dip as those transitions were happening, um, in sixteen, seventeen. There was that dip that you see in the eighteen point three that I'm attributing a lot to those, um, supports, um, that then sort of faded. Um, and then there was this whole, um, two years now of trying to rebuild, right? And be smarter about what we do have. Um, and that's where you start to see, um, that increase of the twenty-two point two. And then last year, staying at that twenty-two point two. Um, and I apologize, it took a lot of time, but I wanted to ground us in that, in that reality. Um, and I actually-
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Are, are you suggesting then that, that dip is a direct result of budget constraints?
I am not saying that it's a direct result, but I'm saying that that is a contributing factor, um, that we have to keep in mind. Um, because clearly, when I went to do my analysis of what was happening before, what was happening now, um, even in these years, you know, the district was revamping curriculum, right? So, it was the beginning stages of revamping the, the pre-K, K first. I mean, now we're all the way to, we're in a good place when it comes to curriculum. So, the, the one piece that I can, that I can see that is different from what we have now is the lack of, of the extent of those, those supports that have those budget implications.
At, at two levels, I just wanna clarify. Supports at the adult level, right? So, we do have some coaches, but it's half of what used to exist in the past. And no intervention department or support. So, that's at the student level. And along with the intervention supports is staffing, because there were interventionists at, at schools, and then the access to intervention programming, which is the licensing that you're talking about.
So, we, we've lost a lot. Um, so now we just have to be smarter about using what we do have, right? Um, in the next, um, this next slide, then I also wanted to paint the picture of, of the three-year trend. Right? Didn't wanna lose sight of that. So, for example, and you can't see my, I have colors, but I think you can see the colors there. Um, what I was trying to do is call attention, if you follow me on grade three. Right? If you just follow that, that row, um, I'm showing you where were we in terms of the percent of students that met grade level standards in twenty sixteen, seventeen, then twenty seventeen, eighteen, and now as recent as last year. And what I'm trying to compare now is what has been the change from where we were eh, at the end of twenty sixteen, seventeen, to where we were last year. And what I wanna highlight is that there is something to be celebrated. You know, we are seeing that there are consistent gains that we are seeing in terms of the, each of the grade levels. A little more in some areas than other, but at the end of the day, we're, we're still moving in the right direction. A little more in some areas than other, but at the end of the day, we're still moving in the right direction.
Can I just?
Yes.
So the grade three line, so 2016, 17, the 18.3%, those were third graders.
Third graders.
Then the next year, there were fourth graders.
No, no, I want to stick with, then I want to make a distinction on my next side. On my next side. So in 17, 18.
Yep.
These are students that are now in third grade. So these are different students.
Different cohorts.
Right, different kids. But we're looking to see how are students scoring when they hit third grade? How many of them are meeting the third grade proficiency? How many of them are meeting the fourth grade proficiency level, right? How many of them meet that mastery of the grade level standards? Now, I'm glad you asked that question, Dr. T.R. I'll wait for your question.
Oh, sorry, just a quick question. It's more particular to the last slide, but it's relevant to this slide. So the dip that we were talking about for 2016, 17 was due to, and again, I know you said it's not all due to, but it was, it could be said that it's because there were coaches in the year prior to for third grade, correct, or for all grades?
For grades, because we know buildings had adults in those roles.
Okay, but that was for all grades? And so I'm just curious, and you might not necessarily have this, but for those kids who were in, and it'll make sense when I get to here, for those kids who were in second grade, right? They would have had the support prior to the dip.
Yes, you would imagine that they would have, right?
Correct.
But I also want to then, I'm going to be highlighting that in my, one of my last slides, that all I know is that there were, there were coaches assigned to schools. Now, what the coaches were doing is a different story in terms of what were the commonalities as to what they were engaging in, because every building had them, but they were directed at the school level.
So you see where I was going, right?
Yes, I see where you're going.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes.
So you said that we, right now, we're a good place when it comes to curriculum. Were we not at a good place with curriculum-wise when that dip took place?
So the district was still, yes. The district was still working on rewriting and updating curriculum. So like last year, right? We were already revised and implementing up to grade five. And then last year also, we were already implementing grade six and seven. But for example, this year now, we're implementing grade eight, right? So if you go, if you backtrack, every year, the district was working on one particular grade level, right? When I say now we're in a good place is because now we have curriculum that has been updated and aligned to Common Core standards all the way from pre-K through eight. And also we have curriculum that has been updated as well in grades nine, 10, 11, and also 12.
For ELA.
For ELA, thank you.
So just out of curiosity, what curriculum are we utilizing for the preschoolers?
So all our curriculum has been locally developed and it's basically used again, standards-driven, talking to the standards that we're trying to address.
So when you say locally developed, you don't necessarily mean that we're purchasing a curriculum for them?
Right, it's not like, for example, that I can say, well, here we're using, oh my God, now I'm blanking, like, the one that we used in early.
Engage New York for math.
Right, or that we're using bigs or something like that that has been used in the past in like pre-Ks, where you often will buy it.
Right.
And just here it is. No, it has been like locally written, paying close attention. Like for example, in pre-K, paying close attention to the edels, right? Those early developmental.
Standards.
Standards.
And last question, locally developed by who?
By folks in the Office of Academics. So we have directors, curriculum writers, right? People that bring that lens and that level of expertise. And then they also engage others in the work, in developing the work.
And are teachers involved in this process of developing curriculum?
So I cannot speak to prior to me. I can speak to now. I am encouraging that we do bring in that teacher voice, right? That they have a role because they know best, right? Often they know very best what is needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So what I wanted to show you then, so you see again the different kids, but how they're responding when they're at that particular grade level. Now I want to show you what we call a rough cohort. Because I also want to show you that we are, we're growing, right? So here, what happens is that you take, go back to that previous slide where you had the 18.3, right? So those were the third graders in 16, 17, right? So now, this is following students, how then did they do in grade four? And that's where you see the 21.8. And then how did the students do when they became fifth graders? And now you see the 25.5. So the story that I want to highlight for you is number one, we're getting more kids to meet proficiency level in each of the grades. And we're also getting students to continue to progress as they move within, up the grade levels. So I hope that I've been able to explain that clearly in these two charts.
So my question, so for me, you did that. So my question is, when you overlay this with the growth metric, I guess, does that give you an additional perspective in terms of the growth that you're seeing within a grade cohort or just across our kids, even if they're not meeting the actual standards?
Right, so we actually want to be paying close attention to the growth, right? Because as part of the smarter balance, what we will get is, we will get, where should that child be within a year? So you can get him or her closer to that proficiency level. So every year, you have a specific target based on how the student performed the previous year that you should be aiming to achieve. So often that is the level of analysis that would be done at the classroom level to then support that teacher in also understanding, when I'm thinking about my student learning goals for the year, what should I be thinking about? How does it look in terms of every single child in my class? So ideally, we're working in concert with the coach to support them to do that, also utilizing the learning that we're getting through data wise, going into something like performance measures, right? Which is the tool that we've invested in to see. So if I have 25 kids in class, where did they score last year? Proficiency is one thing, right? But did they meet the growth target that particular year? How close are they to, how close are they for me to then move them to the next proficiency level, right? So that's the level, the deep level of analysis that needs to happen to then know, like then where do I need to get the student? How am I going to push the student, support the student to get there?
So that's great. So does it then mean that every teacher has access to that information? So if we're meeting students where they are and they know that I'm at a certain place versus a superintendent, then that teacher is able to work with those goals and do those.
And that's what we want teachers to be doing, right? So that it becomes just a habit, because they practice it over and over and over. And later you also will see a slide related to FMP and DIBELS, right? Because smarter balance is also just one indicator, right? So we can't lose, that's just one measure. We have to make sure that we have others. So that's why we take a close look. How are they doing in terms of their ability, particularly at this level in reading? And that's why we're pulling FMP, we're pulling DIBELS, right? So we put all those three things together along with the work that a teacher will see that a child is producing to again, be very intentional about where do I need to go next with this particular child?
One thing that I will add, Ms. Oliver, is, you know, we've heard lots of feedback, including from some of our critical friends, including, you know, SDE around our, and they didn't use this word, I'm using it, fixation, our own fixation that we're going to own around this one specific metric and the fact that we're overlooking, right, all the others, including the growth. And so, you know, I know that cabinet, you haven't seen it, but you'll see it tomorrow morning at our cabinet meeting, which is our proposed draft scorecard, which is also going to include the growth. And then, you know, there are other measures and I'll of course, you know, share those with you all as a board, but we hear that a lot externally, certainly at the state level, and then also even from our teachers. Because we know that that's the work that we're expecting them to do, even around their own goal setting, you know, in terms of student growth and the percentage of students meeting growth. And, you know, that's the work that we're going to be doing with the principals at the next week's Administrative Institute. Yet there's a disconnect at our level in terms of what we are monitoring beyond, you know, the proficiency piece.
Yeah, I have a question. I guess I'm going in a different direction, but I don't see it addressed in any of the charts. But going back to the first chart you showed us, that it shows Hartford residents at 17.3 and non-Hartford residents at 46.8, which is a huge achievement gap that we've always been concerned about. So my question is, what are we doing about that?
So I think that speaks about equity, right? What are we, what access are we providing? What tools are we providing? As you might recall from our meeting this past, it's Monday? I'm losing track.
Monday, yeah.
From Teaching and Learning, right? That my goal is to make sure that at least the classroom teacher has the tools and the resources that they need for every child so that it wouldn't depend on, can, you know, can I afford it because I'm in a magnet? Or my school can't afford it because I'm in a neighborhood? I want to start at least tackling it through that angle, right? That's like my first strategy would be one, the resources. Second would be to make sure that there is consistency across the entire district on the practices that we are employing, which that's where we started in terms of these major actions now. And also the fact that we centralized our coaches was for exactly that purpose, to make sure that even in our professional learning, right? That we're all looking at best practices and bringing that to the classroom level and making sure that everybody has access to that. I believe that at this time, those are my best attempts that we have on how we can begin to address that. Might not necessarily be the full scope of what we need, but I feel like at least we're being intentional about how we're trying to reduce that gap that we continue to see.
And there's perhaps a harder thing. I assume we're talking about English. If I'm a child, it's 10 years old and just came to Hartford from Honduras or Peru or whatever, and I'm a perfectly good reader in Spanish, and now considered not to be able to read because I don't know English. How, and how do we address that?
So we're doing that, I think, in two ways. One, with the work that we engaged in last year, which was number one, to make sure that we did establish a continuum, like a district continuum of support for English language learners and what that was going to look like. Making sure that we were adhering to federal and state legislation that is very clear about the supports that have to be available to English learners, number one. Number two, then also within that continuum, be up calling out, what should the models look like, right? Whether it's at the elementary level, whether it's at the middle school level, at the high school level, and even going as far as what should be the time allocation in terms of the support that the student receives in terms of L services? That's one piece. Second then is what do you do, what do you do in the mainstream classroom, right? There's the piece that you can do in the bilingual classroom, what we could do in our shelter programs, but then what happens to the English learner that is in the mainstream classroom? How do we make sure that we're also supporting that student? And I think that speaks about, again, we're being intentional in the Office of Academics that when we're coming and providing the professional learning, right now, one expectation, something that I started last year with my directors, is that there is co-planning that happens so that it isn't, okay, you're a teacher, now I'm going to make you come to this professional learning where I'm going to teach you this strategy, and then I'm going to make you come to another professional learning because now I'm going to give you a strategy on how you're going to do that for the English learner and for the student with disability. I'm saying that is not effective. Why don't we begin with the planning first to make sure that when we are delivering, we're delivering on a strategy, but we're also calling out, what is a best practice on how you do this to then meet the needs of your English learner and meet the needs of your student with disability in the classroom? So that way we tackle it all within one. We can actually, at that point, support the teacher in differentiation, which is basically what we're speaking about. But we're also doing that in terms of the resources, the text, right? I have shared that we're building and expanding the classroom libraries. Even, I'm going to use that example, right? Even that student that you spoke about from Honduras, Honduras, can that student actually see themselves and relate to something that they're reading because of the text that we're putting in front of him or her, right? Also, so coming at it from both, from both angles, I would say.
I have a really quick question about that. So the Hartford resident proficiency, when it says all students Hartford resident and non-Hartford resident, are we analyzing ourselves as from the non-resident for those who are, we are not touching as a whole? Or are we talking about the kids that we are touching?
No, I just, those are the students that are with us.
So since they're the students that's with us, I'm actually just slightly concerned because that means they're receiving the same thing. And so I guess I'm concerned on, there's no difference between a Hartford resident and a Bloomfield resident student, as far as a student is concerned. And, but if they're going to the same school, let's just say they're both going to a magnet school, the learning that they'll be receiving is the same, correct? Regardless if they're a Hartford student and or.
Right, the curriculum is the same.
Correct. So I guess I'm just concerned with this part when we talked about the access part, because technically the access should be exactly the same if they're both in the same school. So I guess I'm just, maybe I'm confused on that part.
So what we wanted to pull out is that we want to be very intentional about, when we look at data, going very deep into our data analysis and not just leaving it at the all, that we want to be able to disaggregate it. And we disaggregate it in various ways, right? We often will take a look at, well, how did, how did the, how did all students do? How did the Ls do compared to the non-Ls? How did the students with disability do compared to the students with non-disability? And then another layer that we utilize is we also want to take a look at, how did our Hartford resident students do compared to the non-resident students, right? Because at one point, we're noticing that for some reason, right? We see this gap and we want to understand what is that gap about? That our, that our non-Hartford resident students appear to do better in some measures than Hartford residents. So we want to keep an eye on how that performance fares out across various assessments and over the years. Again, now that we are bringing that coherence from school to school, even at the resource level. from school to school, even at the resource level, we're hoping that we're going to start to close that gap a little. But even if you compare, take Hartford Public High School, and how does that school do compared to, I'm going to say, HMTCI, right? We want to start getting to the, to the bottom of that. What is that about? Is it about, is it about resources? It, what, that's what we're trying to understand.
No, no, I understand that part. That's not really where I was going. I guess I was just slightly confused on the part where, when it was addressed, it was stated that it's due to access. And if these kids are in the same school and they have the same access, this, it's not access then at that point. It has to be something else that's going on, because I just, if I was to move to a different town, that's not going to change my child. They're going to be the same child. And they'll be obviously going to a different school. So I'm just, I guess that's the part where I was just slightly confused on. I didn't know if this was a measurement for kids outside of our district or if these were-
No, there are kids.
So there are kids in our school district, which makes complete sense. And I understand how the data is, I'm a data girl too, so I get it. I know. So, but I just, I guess I'm just concerned that it has to be something bigger. And we might not necessarily have the answer right now, but it's something bigger than just access for kids within our own schools. Because if they're in our schools from, let's just say, K through six, and we're measuring them through those years from third, fourth, fifth, same kids, same access per se, within the school district, because they're all attending the same school. There's something going on between a Hartford resident and then a kid who's not a Hartford resident, that might be outside our privy, but it should not be a part of the access within the school, because they should be receiving the same access.
I, I do know that in terms of access for students that are not from Hartford and students that are from Hartford, access before they even get to us. So in this case, I know that when we look at the Hartford residents, we have more English learners in that cohort than we do significantly more English learners in that Hartford resident cohort than we do in the non-Hartford resident. And so that alone, you know, is a, is a, is an access issue in terms of the language. When we, when we look at some of the students that come in later on, compared to our non-Hartford residents who have, for example, been in either our schools or they'll, their town schools, compared to students that are new arrivals and haven't been.
So no, that's great. Like, I get that. So I would, the data would make sense to me if it was like a kid coming in from an outside school that started within our school in, let's just say, fourth grade. I kind of expect their numbers to be much higher than our Hartford residents. I'm more concerned that maybe we probably will have to have data that shows like Hartford resident kids and non-Hartford resident kids who start at the same time, no-
The match cohorts.
The match cohort.
Yeah, like, because right now, this, this doesn't make sense to me in, in terms of access.
Can I add? So this slide, Ms. Clark, but for Hartford resident and non-resident, because when, you know, the rough cohort slide is the match ones. These are the same kids over the years. Is that what would potentially be helpful?
Yeah, so this would be, like, if I saw this with Hartford residents and non-Hartford residents being the same cohort kids, the only difference though, I will say, is probably that will make the difference will be, we're looking at it from third grade, so the access part for the non-Hartford residents might be slightly different because they probably attended a different school. So I probably will want to see it from kindergarten up until like eighth grade because of a magical cohort or whatever, standard cohort. Because I think we'll be able to look at the data from that perspective of seeing what is the difference. And I, I'm saying this because I'm a stickler where it comes from a black and brown kid has to sit with a kid of, that's non-colored in order to be educated better. Like, I'm a stickler on those kind of things because it's just the way the data is showing is that in order for you to be successful, you need to be a non-Hartford resident to be more proficient. And, and that's not true. We know that not to be true. However, the way that, you know, data, you know, we can skew it in any way we want to, but if they're receiving the same access, meaning same teacher, same curriculum, same guided reading, same close reading, there should not be a huge gap. And if there is, then what's going on? What are we doing as a district to, that needs to be addressed? Or is it as a community? Maybe it's outside of the scope of the district and it's something the city needs to do. So I would love, love, love to see that from like, and we might not have it. We might not have a magical cohort that meets those criteria.
We will attempt to get it.
I would like to add something.
I have a, sorry, I sort of to her, a comment on that. And it's that there's so much that affects our learning that has nothing to do with the classroom. It's got to do with social economic conditions outside. And we, and I don't want to say that poor people learn less, but we know that we have a much higher rate of poverty. And poverty brings with it a lot of trauma that sometimes we don't even think about. And all these things affect. We have a lot of people who are new and who don't understand how the system works. I had an earlier meeting with Ms. Avila and was talking, among other things, about this. How do we get through to those parents who don't understand the system? Who don't know what's going on in their school? Don't know what they can do to help their child? And that's not just immigrants. That's really a lot of people who maybe because they lack the opportunity themselves or for whatever reason. But we know there's, there's a lot of social economic factors that enter into this. And it's a comment. Ms. Brody, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
What I believe, the issue to be, Ms. Clark, is that I, I, when I was subbing, I had the opportunity to be, to be covering and pushing into a class. So if I'm in a class with a refugee, I believe from West Middle has the high population, Corinne maybe? So he speaks no English, but whatever he got in his native tongue and the experience that he got as a refugee, he still knew more than our students. I believe it's a, a language thing. I will say until the cows come home that we used to be part of a community that spoke more. So the language exposure, not, and I'm not talking about reading and having them look at books, just talking to children. So when a child, from when a child is born until they enter the school system, the suburban kid has heard upwards of four million more words spoken. Hearing those spoken words help you to when you become an in-classroom learner. So if we think that early childhood is not the single most important thing to us, increasing what we do on this side, we are, we are really, it has to be a joke, because it is, it is a language thing. And the only way, and that's why I, I, I'm hoping for the day that Hartford Public Schools create a platform of our own, that we engage families and we can teach them that. I was trained by the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving years ago to be a facilitator. And it was called Let's Talk. And I've probably talked about it before because it is the best training, the best training I've been in in my life. And it opened my eyes and it helped. And you're able to teach families when you go to the grocery store, when you're in a laundromat, when you're in a car, how to engage with language. It teaches you how, when you're asking a child of a certain age a question, the response time they need to, they need to think about it. Like some need thirty seconds to process what you said instead of, give me an answer. And we had grandmas that just talk. You were in the kitchen and you was asking questions and she was answering all your questions. We talk to our children. We are in the electronic age where if you want to put them in front of the TV, I just want you to put them in front of PBS. But we, I don't think that's the reality for some of our families. But if we are not discussing the exposure to language and if we are not owning, because you may be, you may have a child in the school system, but guess what? Parents are still having kids. We have access to parents. And we need to provide a platform that we're talking about these things, because when you get to the door, you are already behind. And in the suburbs, that is sometimes not the case. And so I was so excited that I'll say, my daughter attends UConn and she has work studies. I'm like, what, what are you going to be doing? She is going to be in the Manchester community, teaching, she said maybe two, she's going to be working with two and three-year-olds. And how she described is what I just said, kind of getting them ready so when they go to school, they're not behind, sort of thing. So it's known that this is a thing. And I don't know what we have to do, because sometimes our parents are saying, I'm not a good reader. So you're turned off by reading. But the Let's Talk, it told, it taught parents how to get a book with not many words. Your kids don't know you don't, your reading skills aren't that great, but you're still exposing them to language. That language gap is a huge problem with us. And I hope that we're able to put something together, because if we do that, I believe we could help our kids. And I don't even know if they do this training anymore. They give you free books, and I went back and for more books, but I don't know. It was phenomenal. So that's where I was going.
So the reason why I was asking for that is that it's beyond probably even the scope of what we can do within our district, right? And so that was exactly where I was going. Because I, I do know the exposure of like language. My, my boys are able to have a full-fledged conversation, whereas kids their age are not able to. And so I knew the importance of language. I knew the importance. It's nothing that the school district even taught for that. So that was why I was trying to understand the difference between the Hartford to the non-Hartford, because it's probably, to your point, maybe it is urban trauma. If that's the case, maybe as a district, then we will implement, you know, PDs on urban trauma. And how do you talk and how do you engage? Because a youth who has trauma is not able to read, do guided, and any of that, and they will be behind versus their non-resident, you know, non-Hartford resident youth. So there is a lot of factors in place that, that's why I kind of wanted to see it from the beginning, so that we can kind of pick out, just be like, okay, here are some of the signs. Is it truly a gap as we're looking at it as? And if it is, it's beyond just the whole, you know, access to resources within a school. It's bigger than that. It's might be access within a community that unfortunately as a district, we won't have under our privy, but maybe we work with the city and say, okay, these are what we see going on. These are the trends that we see. We see that we have a gap of twenty percent, thirty percent for non-Hartford residents. How can we fix this? And this needs to be a priority going forward. So that was kind of why. So she kind of hit on where I was going with it, because it's, it's more than just the access within a school system.
If I may, I'll make a comment about language also, is that sometimes parents who are not proficient in English think that they can't read to their children. And it really doesn't matter what language you read to them. Quite the contrary. Now, it's, it's good for them to grow up with several languages. And Ms. Brody-
No, actually, part of, part of that training too, it said that it's better for you, if only, if you have good Spanish, talk just all Spanish.
Yes.
Because it's easier to trans, it's easier for them to learn English from good Spanish that are, you're trying to, you want them to speak English. So you're, that's not your first language or your best language, but you're trying, but really just do Spanish. So it was a lot of exposure, that too, just Spanish.
And I wanted to say that I love it when you bring up your experience in the classroom as a practitioner, because that, that really, I think it's helpful for me. It's probably helpful to all of us who are not educators. So thank you for that.
So, so I was going to wait on this, but you guys have done such a great job on it. And I know Mrs. Puata here as well, very strong focus on early childhood education and talking more about the pre-K piece of it. But it was recently announced that Hartford is participating in a multi-site project with Bloomberg Philanthropies and will be receiving a grant around word, words count. And Hartford Foundation is one of the key planning partners as part of that. The school district and the superintendent is the co-chair of the Cabinet for Young Children, Mayor's Cabinet for Young Children. And so everyone will be hearing more about this next week when we actually have more of a local announcement here. What's very interesting and what has been, I think, really emphasized here in Hartford is that in addition to the number of words, which some, already has its own controversy in terms of the thirty million gap and all that, but also the higher order thinking that goes with it, right? So it's not just the words, right? It's kind of everything that all of you guys have already pointed out. So we are actually partnering together to be able to try to close that gap and provide more tools, not just to our, our center-based teachers for early childhood education, but also our parents as well, and have multiple partners. So again, more information will be shared about that next week. In addition, our work from preschool to grade three, Hartford Public Schools is also a partner along with CRAC on some of the first school work that goes more to the coaches, work that's, I feel like that's like deeper information that like, you know, maybe not, and I'm not ready for primetime sharing, you know, like and stuff with you guys. But the good news is there's some really good stuff that's happening behind the scenes, is trying to really line all this up. So that, the bottom line is the earlier we work with our, our children and our, and our families, the better, bottom line. And while we do have to acknowledge there are other factors that our children and families are facing, there's so much that we can do in those early years when the brain is like a sponge. And we need to leverage and each other and, and take advantage of that. And again, work with our parents who are so willing to participate and be a teacher of their own, right, in their households. So there's a lot going on and some really, really good stuff around that. And, and we're fortunate as a city to be receiving some funding and support around that. And again, we're very pleased that the school system has decided to be a key leader in making sure this happens. Part of the reason I want to ask some questions as you continue down, we haven't gotten to the slides yet. But, you know, especially as we have another pre-K magnet, the work that I talk about is connected to the school readiness work, which is not every classroom in Hartford Public Schools for the preschool. But we do have some amazing standards. And one of the things that we've been talking about again, somewhat behind the scenes, is how do we line all of this up? So our pre-K students for school readiness, we're following our Office of Early Childhood, which is following the SDE, Department of Ed, in regards to DIBELS, right? We're transitioning to DIBELS. And you're seeing DIBELS inside of this presentation. So you're going to be able to track a little one who's two and a half, three years old, all the way through. And what we are trying to make sure is that we have the infrastructure and the systems in place to support that. So then when we're working with a young person, it's not, okay, we just have to assess you now. We can actually see if something's going on earlier, including other issues. Again, to your point, not always in the classroom, but we're talking about things like trauma. We're also talking about special education where we receive that support from Hartford Public Schools in our pre-K classrooms, not just in HPS classrooms, but across the city, right? So it's probably a whole other presentation, but I, I think it's really important to acknowledge that because we do have a lot of willing parents and community members and other, you know, practitioners, if you will, whether it's our Family Childcare Network, and also parents again themselves, whether it's meeting at the library, et cetera, who are really interested in these different tools that we can provide them. And we talk a lot about how can we provide more tools to our families. So again, more is coming next week on that one specifically. But overall, know that there's a team that we have here at Hartford Public Schools with Dr. Negron, who's really working on that behind the scenes to line up our systems. So that instead of, you know, competing with each other or it just being siloed, we're actually trying to work together. So I think that's really positive news.
I do want to add that we're just starting, right, to do that work. So it's going to take some time. But, you know, I know Ms. Clark, for example, once we have all of these things aligned and all of these, because there will be some data points behind this, right? We'll be able to make that connection. So it's-
I don't ask word now.
It's, no, but, you know, putting it out there, because I see Dr. Negron looking, I'm like, oh my goodness. So we have not-
Well, my ask is not about that. It was, it's merely about the answer to the question. So I just wanted to put some preference to that.
So before I move on to the next slide, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the language conversation. It's refreshing to find a board that on- the language conversation. It, it's, it's refreshing to find a board that understands that, because often what we, what we find, as you know, is people providing parents that incorrect information, that they should not be talking to their children in their native tongue. So, it was like music to my ears. Thank you.
Yeah.
On the next slide, just again, to, to keep with this theme that we're very intentional about, um, the data that we look at to make sure that we continue to learn, uh, about how our students are progressing or not progressing. I wanted to call out that within the smarter balance, we pay close attention to how students are doing in terms of the individual claims. And even here, when we did that analysis in regards to the reading claim, right, we're, we're paying so much attention on the reading side, we really wanted to see how, how that's faring out. And I was, um, very pleased again to point out that we are seeing gains there as well. Like you could see those gains in fifth grade, sixth grade, and, and seventh grade, um, not so much in, in third grade, I'm sorry, fourth grade where we took the little dip, and eighth grade. But again, as I mentioned to you before, we're now launching into that curriculum this year in eighth grade. So we think that that might, might be playing a role there. And also wanted to lift, um, the writing claim, because you see that we were not faring well when you look at grades three, four, and five. So you see only a, a point gain in grade three, negative twelve, negative, negative, um, five in the fifth grade. This is the type of data that we were utilizing when we were saying, we saw that we had gaps when it came to writing. Where our curriculum does speak about the reading and the writing, but we knew that there was a gap. And thus, that investment that it spoke to you in teaching and learning, and we knew we needed to bring in core programming to supporting the delivery of our curriculum, particularly around writing. So this year, we are implementing, um, those resources in grades three, four, and five. Um, I referenced this earlier, again, that it isn't just about smart and balance, but before getting there, continuing to take a look at how our students are doing in Fuentes and Ponnell, which is the assessment that we administer three times a year, as well as, um, DIBELS. So you will see that we are also seeing, um, gains when we compare last year fall to spring. Where did the students start? Where did they end at the end of the year? So we saw some increases in, in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. And similarly, we saw gains in DIBELS in grades K and 1. But we did see, I'm gonna move you to the next slide, we did see, um, gains again in grades three and four, and five and FMP, but not so much when we started to, um, look at DIBELS, particularly around, um, grade three, that we did see a slight, um, decline in that particular grade level. So we're looking at data from all angles, again, to continue to keep an eye on how, um, things are progressing.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Or maybe you can confirm something for me. What I, um, experienced with DIBELS, um, there was an experienced educator, I remember her when I was in Martin Luther King School, and she was like, working as a, she's of course retired, but she was like, coming in and like, testing kids for their reading level. So one thing she expressed to me when she was, I believe she was doing a DIBELS assessment, maybe not, but what she was saying was, a child could not go up to the next level for things like, if she's reading them a story and they're not connecting to the story, like they have a dog, and the story's about a dog, and they never just say, "Oh, my dog." So the connection part, so I think that goes too with our, like, what would our kids say and what would they not say, and why would they not say it? Like, so she was like, if, and she was very helpful, cuz she helped me help the parents to be like, when you're reading to them, like, as a parent, when you're reading to them, you know, at night, cuz, you know, supposed to read twenty, thirty minutes a night, try to make them connect to the story. Ask them questions, like, you know you have a cat, the story's about a cat, they should be saying, they should be referencing their cat. So, that, that is something, like, when she expressed that to me, and she was like, if they are not making that connection with the story, cuz it must've been like, some kinda metric, they were not moving their reading level up. Like, they could read, and they could read everything on the page, but it was a part of the assessment that had to do with connecting and art. She was like, they're just not connecting to the story.
So there are very clear guidelines on how it is that you administer a, a DIBELS assessment, right, and there are various components, and it sounds like you're speaking more about the whole comprehension, where they have to be making those connections. Um, so a lot goes into it, right, and it, and because it's teacher administer, that also speaks to, um, the need for us to spend time in making sure that we're calibrating all of our teachers who are administering the assessment, to make sure that it's being done, um, in the same manner, in interpreting what they're hearing from the student in the, in the same way to then decide, can I move on with the next, or is this where I stop? And, and say like, I can't move on then, to continue to, to push. Um, so it's, it's a lot, it's a lot more challenging than people might think initially, because of those same reasons that you're speaking about.
And the, and the parents are frustrated, cuz they like, my kid can read, but it's so much like, into what the test administers and looks for, that yes, they can read, but it has to be some type of, and do, I don't know how, um, we would do it, but that, for me, it was wonderful, cuz I'm like, I need these, I, I want, I wanted that for the student, so I could say for this particular student to that parent, when you're reading, this is what, you know, um, you know, our teacher who's doing the assessment, this is what she's saying and you're missing, but just the fact that they were not making that connection, I couldn't like, understand, like, why wouldn't they mention, but I guess it goes to experience and what they would express or not, but it was keeping them at a place where they could, they could not move up from the com- the comprehension part.
And while we're talking about DIBELS, I also wanted to let you know that we had been using DIBELS Next, which is what the state, um, was also, um, recommending, but now, like, we're, we're using, um, it's called DIBELS 8. So you will see, it was DIBELS Next, now it's DIBELS 8, um, new term, very, um, similar, but it does have, um, some slight changes, that again, we're gonna have to now, um, spend time in supporting teachers with this, um, new version, right? So that, we also have to keep in mind, later on, when we continue to report on data, to learn about those changes that might be happening at the same time, even in the assessment that we're looking at.
Just wanna make a connection to it, Ms. Brody was saying, and, and our role, you know, in differentiating those pieces for the parents, right, cuz there's oftentimes, um, you know, there's a fluency piece and then there's a com- you know, the comprehension piece. And so students can certainly identify and read and pronounce words, but whether or not they comprehend it at a deeper level, that's, that's really the challenge. And for students too, right, when students can, can say to you, "I can read, I'm reading, hear me read."
Yeah.
But, right, they will tell you and, and how, you know, disappointing it can be for some students to feel that they cannot advance to the next level because of their comprehension, so.
So I'm gonna move on. Um, this particular, um, table that I, that I have here for you, um, I wanted to share with you to say that we might not be progressing at the rate that we need to progress, based on the number of students, um, who are meeting proficiency, but at the end of the day, like, we are starting to see indicators of movement. So this represents the different, um, particular targets that we, um, look for in grade six, seven, and eight, in terms of students' ability, um, to, to demonstrate, ability to hit these targets. And what I have for you is, if you take a look at the, the last column, this, this represents numbers of schools, right, numbers of schools that were able to hit proficiency, based on the number of stu-, on how the number of students perform within that grade level in that particular target. The reason why I'm pointing it out is that when we started to look at this information at the beginning of last year, to think about what were we gonna focus in, in terms of close reading, and why were we making such an emphasis? This is the data that we were looking at, and we were very happy to see that last year, when we looked at it, you would only see in the last column, a number one next to key details in grade six, a number one in central ideas, and a number one in word meanings for grade six. Everything else would've been zero, meaning no school met that target. Where at the end of last year, you were now starting to see some ones in that column, meaning we're now having schools meeting those targets. So again, not a lot, but again, a small little win, um, that, that we take, because it does speak about the work that we're doing around the strategy on close reading. So I wanted to highlight that for you. At the same time, we are very pleased with what we saw in terms of the gains in PSAT and SAT. Very connected to our work around close reading. So here you see, um, how it is that students, um, what percent of students met the college and career readiness benchmark? What does that mean? That means that there is a, a number that students, um, should aim to score at, in terms of their reading and their writing component, and in terms of their math component. There's a number that you aim for in grade nine when you take the PSAT, the same thing when you take it in grade 10, and that's supposed to be indicative of how you will do when you take your SAT. And we're trying to get to that SAT, the benchmark being, can the students score at, um, four, um, I don't wanna misquote. Can we get them to score four eighty in the reading and the writing, and can we get the students to score a five thirty in math? Because that translates, they're able to score that level, that when they go to college, they're going to at least be able to pass the freshman, um, level, um, course, right? That they can have at least, um, an average of like a C, like a passing score. So we wanna move more and more kids to meet that benchmark, that college and career benchmark. And we see that we're growing, like, that's, that's the growth. We saw eight, um, eight percent in grade nine, um, two percent in PSAT, three percent in SAT. It's really difficult to grow in this particular area. So again, I wanted, I really wanted to highlight, um, the work that is being done.
So this is a, I just wanna say that this is a big win also for two, that's why two levels. So clearly, for your team, given the work that we tried to, you know, move with the close, uh, the close reading, and I remember the conversations with the principals when we first introduced, you know, the close, the guided and then the close reading, and we struggled as to whether or not we should push the close reading down to the middle grades, right? There was a lot of conversation about, no, leave it at the high school. And, you know, our pushback, if you will, was around the fact that we wanted to start earlier to be able to make the alignment for, you know, the C, the college and career readiness piece. And so at least we can, you know, grab on to the fact that, you know, there's, you know, there's hope, there's a lot of hope here, um, in terms of practice and in terms of outcomes for our students.
I have a question. So, based on the way this is set up in terms of the PSAT for eighth and ninth grade, and then again for 10th grade, and then SAT out of 11th grade, um, do we require our students to take the PSATs or the SATs, and does it follow this kind of timeline? Like, how does that work? And I know, in my head, I'm, I'm hearing also the student success plan, but I keep being told, don't worry about those. So, but I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if that's something where, while it's definitely great that we're seeing the positive change, please know I'm not trying to take away from that piece, I'm just wondering if it's something that we can expect, that our students that, um, and it may be that you're only able to guide them to do this type of schedule, but I just wondered, um, about how it's lined up here.
So I'm glad you asked, because we are moving in that direction, right? So we are saying that we want all Hartford Public School students to take the PSAT in grade nine, in grade 10, take the SAT in 11, and we're also starting this year to do SAT School Day for 12th grade, right? We do know that, um, and this was late, we had to wait to get some guidance from, from College Board and how we could afford to support students, right, so that we would be able to pay, um, for the test. And realizing that some students already, because they have the parents at, at home, that understand this whole system, and had already made arrangements, we know of some students that were already taking advantage of that Saturday administration. But my conversation with building leadership has been, well, what about the student that doesn't have the parent that's saying, "We need to sign you up for SAT Saturday," or that can even get you to the administration? So I wanna build the practice that we will do this every single year, and that we find the means to support the students. So right now, we, we are launching, um, we are making some exceptions, based on, on students already that either were already scheduled for the Saturday administration, or they took it in 11th grade, very pleased that they met the benchmark, right? And doing things like, do we have the calculators that we need for students to be able to, again, have the tools that they need to be successful? So again, being intentional, I'm gonna say it again, being intentional about the resources and the supports that we make available, um, to all students, because I'm saying not all. Why should it only be, um, I know at one point, we were trying to do only neighborhood schools and not magnet. Well, what if I go to a magnet? Why don't I have access to that? So again, I'm trying to be very intentional about all students. Can we get to that point first? And these best practices, a student never know, right, maybe they don't have an aspiration to go to college, but what happens maybe two years down the lo-, the, the road when they graduate? Maybe they do, and at least they can tap into this, um, assessment, right, that sets them up to be able to, to begin college. So I wanna start building those practices across the entire district.
I also wanna call out the equity piece, and that there's still some mindset shifts that have to happen at the district. Um, you know, it was just recently, right, that we were having this conversation about making sure that our students have access from an equity point to taking the SAT. And, um, you know, prac- previous practices around, well, yes, neighborhood schools are gonna be prioritized, and that's great, right, we want to do that. Um, and you, you raised, uh, Dr. Negron, you know, this notion that not magnet schools, yet, right, we have our, our neighborhood school, our neighborhood students, right, that, that go to our magnets, and so there is still a lot internally that we have to do work in terms of the narrative and then the thinking, not just in terms of, you know, at the, at the leadership level, but also at the support level, you know, with regard to our counselors and the staff that we have that support, right, college and career readiness as well. So while it's a point for celebration that we, you know, are, are pushing in that direction, there's still.
A lot of work.
Work that, you know, we still have to do.
So where are we going? Um, we're not, we're not bringing another initiative. We are saying, we're sticking with our major actions of guided reading and close reading. Last year was our first year of implementation, now we go deeper into those strategies, right? Now we start. Now we start to make sure that guided reading is happening with fidelity. Right? That's, that's what we're working on now. What's the rigor in that component of the guided reading? That's what we start looking for. As you heard me say before, we're rolling out a core program in grades three, four, and five to continue to support delivery of our, of our curriculum. So for that, we just brought in Benchmark. That's the name of the core program. And again, getting it into every single classroom. So every teacher has access to the resources. Continuing again with our DataWise journey, making sure that we get better and better and better at utilizing the data to know where students are at and inform our practice. And continuing our district-level coaching support. What is it that they do? How do they engage with teachers? What do those coaching cycles look like? How do they support all aspects of a school? And similarly, continuing the work around close reading. This year, we're going more into reading through a lens. Last year was, you know, multiple reading. This year is reading through a lens. What is the lens? What is your, your purpose? How can you find patterns in what you read? How do I get you to develop new understanding based on how you are interacting with text? And have to be very real about what are the challenges that we have when we look at this year? Challenges are that we are still not at a place that every child has guided reading three to five days a week. We have named that since day one. We are still aiming to get to that fidelity. We're still aggressively working at that. Another challenge is a great thing that we brought in the supports, but that's also another challenge. Because now we have to support every teacher across the entire district with utilizing that resource and making the best use of it. So how do we support them? How do we support teachers again? In helping teachers, what do we mean by looking, reading through a lens? What does that look like? What does that feel like? So again, a lot of professional learning that needs to happen to support our teachers. And the fact that we only have limited time to be able to do that. We only have X number of professional learning days that we have for teachers, whether it's full days or early release days. How do we access then? How do we do job in better coaching? We got to do more of that. But at the same time, we have to, we have to also be cognizant that we only have a total of 32 instructional coaches. That's all we got. That's, that's literacy, K-5. That's the coaches that we have in humanities, right, 612. That's inclusive of the coaches that we have in math and the coaches that we have in, for else.
And half of what existed four, five years ago.
Yes.
Only for literacy.
Literacy and math, that's it. So those are significant challenges. We will continue to, to try to be smart about the decisions that are being made, the strategies that we are employing, and maximizing the adult supports that we currently have. Don't want to leave on a sour note. So I do have three more slides that are celebrations that you should have in your packet. The ones that I'm highlighting for you have, I added some language that you did not have on your slides before they were printed, just so that you better understand the data that's in front of you. So for ELA, grades three, four, and five, these are the schools that had the most growth, meaning. So I'm going to pull up, I'm going to look at West Middle. West Middle was able to get 17% more students to meet that grade level standards. That's what the first green bucket represents. The bottom one gives you then, when you look at the entire district, who has the highest percent of students meeting grade level standards? You have the all on the left and you have grade three, grade four, grade five. And on the next slide, you have grade same information but for grade six, seven, and eight. So again, the most growth. Which school had the most growth? And who are the schools at the top? When we compare the entire district. I do want to flag that we do have two schools that made the most growth that are in that bucket. There are also six schools, meaning that we have school improvement grants from the state. So that has allowed for additional resources for those particular schools. And that is Parkville and Asian Studies that made it into that bucket of the most growth. And similarly, we did the same thing for you in terms of PSAT and SAT. So you could see who had the most growth. And then who has the highest rates.
Just want to highlight that it's not here, but in terms of for grade nine, 80% of our schools improved.
Thank you. I, I thought it was too confusing, so I pulled that out.
Yeah, I think it's, it's.
But yes, it represents, in grade nine, that in addition to this, 80% of our schools improved in grade nine PSAT. And also 53% of our schools improved in PSAT grade 10. And 60% of our schools increased in SAT. So those are like huge wins. That's it, that's all I got.
I have a couple of comments. One, when we're looking at the years to year, I don't think you mentioned that we now have a consistent ELA curriculum across all schools, which was not always the case.
Correct.
And another thing is just sort of kudos. I'm really happy to see an emphasis on writing. My past experience back in the corporate world was extreme frustration at having people come in with MBAs who could not write a decent essay. And I, I believe that writing is an extraordinarily important skill, no matter what field you're going into. And the third thing that I wanted to mention, you talked about reading through a lens and also the authors are writing from a certain perspective. And I, I hope that we're also emphasizing that to the students to understand.
Author's purpose.
Thank you very much.
So one of the things we talked about is the fact you don't have as many resources, or we don't have as many resources as we did maybe a couple of years ago. And, and I think it's fair to say we don't have as many coaches, therefore, we're able to put across the schools. With that being said, could you just quickly speak to how you're using this data to determine how you're allocating the coaches that we actually do have?
So for example, one of the things that we've seen is that we had five, just five coaches dedicated to support schools in grades six through 12. Five coaches, right? So that means one person having quite the load in terms of supporting. So how much could you actually do? And we are very intentional, right? We take a look like who needs the most support. We're cognizant also not to, to burn out the coach either. So kind of balancing the schools, but being intentional about, well, how many? Based on how needy the schools might be. So that's one strategy that we employ. But that's, I mean, that's a reality. You also, I mean, when you consider math, I mean, we, we didn't look at math today. That'll be in the future. But the fact that there are 13 coaches that have to support every grade in the entire district, right? So we have to be very intentional. And in doing that, also protecting what it is that the coach does when they report to the school. So want to make that connection to the earlier statement. Yeah, it was great that we had 70-plus coaches, but we didn't know exactly what they were doing, right? And we are very intentional about, as a strategy, centralizing the coaches and even starting with that job description about what exactly was that coach going to do? And then even developing a coaching framework that was also written to make sure that again, that it's about, this is what the coach is supposed to be doing, which at the end of the day is coaching. So we have to protect that time for the coaching. Another thing that we've done, based on the data that we are looking at, who, which are the schools that in, in need of the most support? And now, one of the things that is happening at this point is my office engaging with the Office of School Leadership and designing what we're calling strategic support. And then being, engaging the directors and going in deep into the data that if I'm seeing these type of performance levels at grade three in these particular schools, what should that support? We always talk about support. But what does that actually mean? And what is that going to mean particularly to, for these, for example, eight schools? What would that support look like in grades three, four, and five? Because we want to be very intentional about the data that we're seeing. So, and, and again, trying to maximize with the little that we do have. Can we get more? Yeah, I want to be honest and transparent, right? You, you hear this line, right? I'm, I'm making a pitch here. We need more because we do know at the end of the day, it comes down to that classroom teacher and what they're doing and the moves that they're making in the classroom. And you know that we have, I mean, when you look at the, the mobility amongst our teachers, that's, that's another challenge that I neglected to call out. We spend a lot of time in professional learning and we go all in. And now we have to recover everything that we did last year. We have to find a way to bring that back because now we're training an X number of teachers that are new in those particular grade levels. So it just becomes a revolving door. And then at the end of the day, like if we don't develop as it is, I know this is not my area, but I'm going to say it right now. If we don't develop a strategy around talent and how we're going to recruit and how we're going to retain and how we're going to nurture people, I don't know how we get to the end game. Because we just have this revolving door. And let's be real, it is, it is October. It's October 1st. And we still have some vacancies. I'm very concerned about that. We've, we've lost a month. When we have, in some cases, students have to grow more than one year. So very concerned about those challenges as well.
I know you guys are ready to go. The other thing I'm thinking of, I mean, you, you mentioned the importance of that classroom teacher, which I completely wholeheartedly agree. Has there been some thinking around how our strategies around community schools are also going to be able to support this work? I, I know that for the past several years in Hartford, it's also been important about how do we support the teachers during the daytime, not just the after-school activities. And many of the partners do that in different ways. But is that something that your team is looking at also? I'm knowing that, you know, there's the coaching and not by any means, meaning community schools and that structure can supplant, or teachers by any means. I'm just thinking about how do they align and support these type of strategies? And it may be something you're still exploring, but I just, I thought I'd ask a question.
I, full transparency, that is an area of opportunity. What we are doing now is we're actually waiting to see what the outcome of the study that the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving is partnering with us to do around the community school model implementation over the years. You know, I think there's an opportunity for us to step back and really look at, you know, what are our students, for example, engaging in in their after-school program component? And the opportunity there to align it further to, you know, what it is that those, you know, specific reading, you know, strategies that are happening in the classroom. There's opportunity there for additional intentionality.
So, so thank you for that. I would say, yes, and based on my own site visits, the partners assist the teachers during the classroom day, right? And I know sometimes that gives the teacher, what, what I saw, and I don't know if it was correct, but what I saw was the teacher did a lesson and then the students were, they were rhyming. I know that means something else. They were all, but they were doing the rhymes. And then the partner was able to support them in the activity and it gave the teacher some time to kind of go, go back to the lesson plan, look at maybe their little homework and do some other things. And I, you know, of course, we're probably seeing one of the greatest, you know, best classrooms is what they're going to show off when we do site visits. But at the same time, I was just thinking about also those opportunities as well. Because what I witnessed as a non educator looked amazing to me. It was like the, the teacher and that partner were in sync. I don't know if that's something that's consistent across the model, but I'm also thinking about other opportunities as we're doing kind of the guided reading and the close reading strategies that weren't in place at the time when, when I was doing some of those sites visits. Like, how does that help further all of this along? So I'm just also thinking about that in addition to
During the day.
The after-school. Yeah, because, you know, being part of Hartford Partnership of Student Success, one of the struggles have consistently been, how do we track progress during the school day? As opposed to traditionally the after-school work, which the partners did work with the principals at the time, again, not a consistent curriculum, to try to line up the after-school curriculum. But again, they were doing things during the day, which I found very powerful. But again, just thinking about how that could further support this, these strategies.
Yeah, we could, we would need to look at further. I know that there is a specific school that I myself also witnessed. And even within the school, there was variance in terms of, you know, the community school staff supporting or not supporting, or, you know, some were doing pullout and some were pushing in. Yes, opportunity for us to look at that question.
One thing I learned yesterday that's being done at HMTCA and I hope at other schools is the use of higher-grade students being used as teacher assistants in the lower grades. So I was talking, you know, at a PPT about my son and his algebra class and the vice, the assistant principal explained how she, there's a student in that class who's, I believe, a junior. And he helps those students that are having difficulty and so forth in the class in the ninth grade. So I, I was pleased to hear about that and I hope we can do more of that.
Question. Do we ever invite our after-school program providers to be a part of any professional development? So when they're working with our young people after school, could they support them?
So again, that's.
Be intentional about it.
Right, that's, that's a great idea. No, we do not. And I think it's an issue of even ourselves now trying to. And I think it's an issue of even ourselves now trying to create the most optimum learning environments for adults in trying to keep those to be very like small group. And then the challenge becomes then who actually facilitates the sessions? And where do the sessions happen? So ideally, I mean, it would be a great idea because then they're receiving the same professional learning to be able to support the students. But it becomes an issue of then the capacity for us to be able to then train and how to do that with the limited resources that we have.
Or maybe just a creation of some type of sheet of from grade one, two, three, because for grades one K through two, it might be the same grade. Just to say, for reading, this, that, and that, if you could support, you know, something that, yeah. That would be, that would be awesome.
I will say from the community school side that there are some trainings that we are invited to and we are able to participate in for the professional development. It is different from school to school, but I will say that there is some input from the community school side. It's not, I know it's not district-wide, but it's more of at the district, I mean, excuse me, at the school level where some community schools will allow some of the community school partners to come in and do those trainings. So it is infused in that way. I will say one of the difficulty, difficult things when providing after-school programming and then doing the push-in and/or the push-out, some of the funding is specific for after-school. And requiring for a community school, I mean, excuse me, an after-school program to now provide academic support for an after-school program can become problematic because they're not trained as teachers and/or educators. And then also during the day, replacing the, and it's not in all schools, but I have seen within some schools that replacing a behavior tech and/or a coach with a community school person can also be something that happens. And sometimes it's at the discretion of the principal, like, hey, you're here. We would love you to be a support in this area because of the level of funding. And so when it comes to like being in the school and making it district-wide, it can pose a problem just coming from the community side of it. Because what we don't want to do is have our community partners now become like our behavior techs or being the instructional coaches when they haven't received the proper training to doing that. But I do believe that we can find a cohesive way to figure out ways on which our community partners can be really that resource as we're going forward with even just this guided reading or any other project going forward when it comes to the deficiencies that the district has. Just asking our community partners if they can provide some support and if so, how could we leverage that? Sometimes it does come down to capacity and it also comes down to funding. So those are kind of some of the things that we can take into consideration as we're moving forward. But I do believe community partners can be a real big asset as we're moving forward.
Well, thank you, Dr. Negron.
You're welcome.
It's one of my favorite things and I think most of my colleagues will agree is that it's listening to talk about teaching and learning because that after all is the reason we're all here. Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you to the team. We're beginning to see the connections. And so it's important for us to see how it lifts and lives in the data.
I'm not going to lie, you are absolutely right. Because when this first came out, I was like, what are we doing? I remember the beginning of the school year when people were coming. I was like, this is cool. How is this going to work? So I will say, I can see how it's starting to fold together and connecting because I was like, another initiative, I'm poor teachers. So I'm so glad to see that it's like working and that there's no other initiative and you're kind of just building on that.
Please ask your children because that's when, you know, it really, you know, are they close reading? What does that look like? Are you annotating? Because I hear it at home with my own, yes, close reading. I'm close reading this too. So, yeah, ask.
And this was a formal meeting, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? But we are adjourned, thank you very much.